Mr. Member of the 14th Council, may you call over with the plea, and the pledge of allegiance in one more side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the August 24 meeting.
Need to approve the minutes from August 24, 2020, second.
I'd like to make one correction, it needs to be made, I talked to the act about it, and there are a motion on the second, by the same person.
Okay.
Can you just touch? Second.
So, it's been a motion on the second to approve the minutes, would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
With the modification.
Yes, sir. Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be press your comments from the public. Would you please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
John, I'll vote, 10601 Shawnee in Edwardsville. I'm a member of the planning commission, and I'd like to preface my remarks by saying our commission is very cohesive, we have an excellent staff, and one of the reasons that I've come here this evening is because one of the issues you have when you're not at the request for a C-3 for the Jackson service station is probably the first controversial thing we've had on our commission in the entire time that I've sat there. It's unique in that, and not only that, but also in the fact that this was the first issue that's come before us where the people requesting the change didn't show up. So, several problems with it that I see. One is it's a poor location for what they're requesting. They're asking for a truck stop within a short distance from the stoplight. There it's a short distance, it's going to be noisy, so it's a short distance over the tracks to the mobile home park. It's really, I think the lot is too small for what they're trying to accomplish there. They're going to have to eliminate half of their consumer gas pumps to allow for traffic in to get around to the other side. And so as much as we'd all love to see that one lot cleaned up, I don't think this is a project for them. The only argument I've really heard for it is that, well, if we give them this zoning change, we can keep track, but they gotta jump through a lot of hurdles down the road before they can actually create something here. That's not a good argument to me for the simple fact that once we give them the zoning change, we've opened Pandora's box. From there, if this falls through, there are other undesirable projects that can be put forth, and we won't have as much ammunition to go against them as we do now. I might, if you agree with that it's a good project, I might agree with you from the sense that had they come forward, had they gone to DOT, had they brought something to us and said, "Look, we've gone to DOT, we've got permission for the trucks to enter the highway," if they give us something, anything, but they've given us nothing. So all we have is a pick and a poke here. Give us the C-3, and maybe we'll come up with something someday. And I don't think that's adequate enough for your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Are there any others? If they have not, we move on to the next item on the agenda will be consider motion to go into executive session in accordance with KSA 75 4319B2 for consultation with legal counsel regarding information which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship related to the Billy South added to the ZO project.
Hold on with you.
Fifteen minutes, and we'll probably be back in about.
Twenty after?
Yes.
Okay.
What the mayor said, going back at twenty after.
It has been moved in second to go into executive session until 7:20. Would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
It has been moved in second to go into executive session until 7:20. Would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
It has been moved in second to go into executive session until 7:20. Would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Adams. Perfect.
Okay, next item on the agenda is reconsider recommendation of approval from the planning commission regarding the replat, final plat of 10326 Richland, 316 South 102nd Street, and acceptance of dedicated public right of ways and depletions. Well, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As already read, this is an application for a final plat or replat of the property on Richland and South 102nd Street. The addresses have already been read to the record. This application was received on June 28 of 2020. It was filed by the owner's agent. The replat is for approximately 22.7 acres of land consisting of two parcels currently. So there are one parcel that is adjacent and has access off of 102nd Street, one parcel that is adjacent has access off of Richland. The property is proposed to be replatted into three lots with the dedication of additional public right of way along Richland and 102nd Street. The additional right of way typically when we are plating or replating property, we try to get the right of way so that we are requiring enough right of way from center line to the edge of the road that it meets with our future plans for any road expansions or road improvements. So in this case, on both of those roadways, we are having public right of way dedicated to that use for access. And then access to Lot 1, which is the new lot being created that currently has no adjacency to any public street, access is going to be gained through right of way that's being provided for what's called 103rd Court. So there is an extension of right of way coming off of Richland, heading north, that will then be able to serve all three of the properties where it ends or where the cul-de-sac will be eventually done. Understand, we are not requiring at this point in time any roadway improvements as part of this. This is simply the dedication of right of ways. The trigger being that if that Lot 1 wants to be developed in the future, that would require the road improvements to be made to support that development. So as long as it remains in agriculture and that use, they can utilize the right of way as kind of an access drive, agricultural entrance, if you will. They'll have to meet our driveway standards. They'll be able to access that Lot 1 through a public access way, but they would not have to build it to typical street construction standards, okay? What triggers that is the building of a home or multiple homes in the future that might go on there.
One individual home?
One individual home would do it, yeah, would be a trigger of that kind of thing. The planning commission on August 19 held their public hearing in regard to the plat. The property owners were available for questions at public hearing. There were no comments made by the public during public hearing. In closing, staff supports the recommendation of the planning commission for approval of the replat slash final plat with the four conditions included in the staff report. Those conditions are pretty typical for us. We want to have a note added on the replat document requiring public roadway improvements to be made to 103rd Court by the property owner of Lot 1 as part of the issuance of any future building permit associated with developing that property. Two, then cleaning up any general type graphical errors. Three, subject to final review, which is typical, the technical reviewers just make sure all the wording and signature blocks are accurate, and then meeting the submitted final requirements of the UCD and county survey. With that, I stand ready for any questions.
Is this one that we just split into two, not two or one either?
No. Trying to think what you might be referring to. We have south, yeah, we've had on the south side, and when we did that on the south side, we also got right of way along Richland at the same time.
Different owners?
Different.
Hart.
Yes. There, so Erin Hart owns Hart this lot, and she also is a co-owner of the lot, so they were actually doing a number of replat. Yeah, so the names are relatively familiar.
Okay, not most serious. And do you know what their goal is or their purpose in the?
Well, my understanding, the property on 102nd Street was in the process of trying to sell that property, but they wanted to reduce the size of that acreage. There was another buyer behind Erin's property on Richland that was interested in purchasing that property, so there's some transference of ownership going on in that process. I don't know the details of that, that's not part of their application.
Do you know if that, all the water is on that one lot, so that the property line doesn't go through the water, does it?
I don't think it goes through the water. I'm pretty sure that it's actually west, yeah, I think it's west. Yeah, I think they're west of the pond on that.
And we've gotten, we've gotten right of way on 102nd and also along Richland?
Yes.
Then the access through, through the cul-de-sac?
Correct. Which had to eventually come off of what is now a lot, so the ownership of that parcel had to dedicate, provide the sufficient right of way for the road as well as on the street, and of course, that pushed the back property line farther back to meet the minimum fighting requirements. So all three lots need our zoning requirement for minimum five acres.
And what are the restrictions on the road with 103rd Court terrace?
Right for them?
Yeah, there's no restrictions on it.
Construction standards or anything?
It has to be our standard. Once it's built as a public street, if it's dedicated for public use, at the time they give a house a build, then they will have to construct that public street in accordance with the standards. And if they build a house, and they want to access it for the other parcels, that's abnormal, so they have to come by, you know, agreements between the property owners, they go back and forth, and that will appear, that it can't be used for public access of city-owned property toward the dedication, just like any other roadway. So it can only be used at a street. We need a motion for both replat and then another for final, correct? No. This is one. Make a motion to accept the approval of the planning commission regarding replat and plat, final plat for 10326 Richland and 316 South 102nd with the four listed conditions.
Second. It has been moved in second to adopt the, approve the planning commission's recommendation on replat, final plat of 10326 Richland and 316 South 102nd Street with the four conditions. Would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McTaggart?
Yes. Next item will be reconsider recommendation approval of planning commission regarding the preliminary and final development plans for proposed transportation center at 9207, 9233 Wood End Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I won't go over the addresses again. This is an application for a preliminary plan and a final development plan, so it'll require two motions tonight, one for approval of the preliminary plan and one for approval of the final development plan. On July 1, the applicant filed their preliminary plan and final plan applications for a transportation center on approximately 4.4 acres of land on the south side of Wood End near the I-435 interchange. This is what was known as the Kincaid property. Kincaid Coach Lines was using this property. It's actually two parcels, that's why you have the two addresses. The parcel line divides the property roughly in half as it's currently platted. To date, the property is zoned I-1, non-hazard zoning district, which allows for the proposed use as a transportation center. The owner has made some improvements to the existing building in northeast corner of the property, so the building that is on Wood End in the northeast corner, there's a little gate that comes in the drive, and then that building that sits right there, there have been exterior and interior improvements made to that building to date. They have received a temporary business license and occupancy license for using that building, and that's why you'll see the Dot Foods trucks have been going in and out of there using that facility currently. They're in a lot of use. The issue here is they want to expand the area for parking, and they also want to demolish some of the buildings that are on site already. So they're basically cleaning up the property, will be dealing with some stormwater improvements, things like that, landscape improvements as part of the development plan process. So those improvements to that building have been made, and the plan is for that building to stay on the site. Like I said, the temporary occupancy permit and business license have been issued to the tenant, and they've begun utilizing the existing paved area and building for the initial operation. The development plan primarily addresses the demolition of existing structures and the expansion of the paved area and property, as I mentioned before. On August 19, the planning commission held their public hearing in regard to the items. The staff and representatives of the application spoke at the public hearing. There were no comments from the public in regard to objections to the project itself. So in closing, staff supports the recommendation of the planning commission for approval of the preliminary development plan and the final development plan with the exceptions and exemptions and deviations and four conditions included in the staff report. Understand, I'll go over those quickly. We are asking for greater details related to the fuel tank and the dumpster enclosure, just making sure that they're consistent with the architecture of the building and things like that on site, knowing where they are, some of the dimensions. So there were some basic things that we wanted to make sure of, and also just making sure that that area is adequately screened to meet our applicable requirements. The second condition has to do with the signage. If you look at the plan sheets, the way the signage is located would not be acceptable. It's in public right of way, it's not on private property. So they're going to be subject to getting a sign permit application into us, and at that point in time, we'll review the location of the sign. I believe the applicant is aware of that, and all we need to do is just make sure through this condition that they understand they have to get their signed permit, so I'll have to bring those points forward and adjust. Then third, that separate instruments dedicating additional right of way along 93rd Street south of the current entry drive, and additional 10-foot drainage on west side of the property shall be developed, executed, filed. So the applicant has already agreed to doing those as separate instruments. Because we're not replating the property, we want to get those drainage in place, so that'll happen through a separate agreement, through a separate dedication and, and then just subject to the applicable federal, state, local regulations, acquiring appropriate permits. So with that, I stand ready for questions.
You want to talk about deviations?
Oh, I can mention, yeah, sorry about that. I'll just mention, there are three deviations that have been requested on this, and they're primarily reductions of rear and side setbacks, primarily because they're trying to get enough parking area that can park trailers, but also have trucks maneuvering on the property itself. So when they started laying out all the truck diagrams that are in your packet and things, the request for the rear parking setback is a reduction from 20 feet to 10 feet, and then on the side parking setback from 10 feet to seven feet, and then finally, the increase of the maximum lot coverage. We allow in our industrial area 50% coverage, they're requesting 86% coverage. Stormwater calculation is everything, take care of the drainage side of this, and it should work okay. And I'll just mention, in our industrial area, in that portion of the city, it's pretty routine that we have those exceptions in regard to lot coverage, because we're dealing with a lot of traffic and movements of concrete and things like that.
David, I just want to clarify, the first motion is to approve the preliminary development plan.
Correct.
The second motion is to approve the final development plan with the exemption.
With the exceptions and the conditions, deviations and conditions.
Thank you.
On the conditions, it is as that you would like the details related to the fuel tank and dumpster, if they bring you the details and they're not adequate?
They'll have to meet our standards, which basically, all we're really interested in really is that screening, and then the material of the dumpster screening area. A lot of times, we won't accept like a wooden gate, it has to be a metal gate. There'll have to be, you know, probably concrete block or something like that, more substantial than just chain link backs, because we're trying to screen service areas. But I believe the applicants, I think, are aware of those conditions, or at least those needs of duty.
And transportation center, is that like where trucks will park or?
Yes. So my, my understanding of this, and I think the applicant's here, I'm right behind you, yeah, there we go. Turn them all over. I'll try to give it a rough example. Essentially, what's happening here is a truck will come in, drop a trailer, a new driver with a new truck will pick that trailer up, so it's a transfer, it's kind of like the Martin Transport Center that they've got. They will have one or two bays, I can't remember. It's two bays that will allow for some minor maintenance, like oil changes and things like that, but those are inside that building that would be on the northeast part of the property. So it's got some offices, then it's that transport, you know, basically, it's a, it's a transfer station if you want another driver's side. Is that fair? David, I have a question. And actually, it's more of a, to let you know, it's not a fueling center. There will be, there will be no fueling outside.
Is there a thought process of leaving it two plats as though, combining them in or?
Well, if we were building another building and everything else, we would come back through the replating process. Because of the nature of what they're doing, demolishing the building, the actual building that's there that's going to be demolished in the center of the site is split right now by that property. That's being removed, so it's just surface area. In the long run, replating, what I would consider the next advice would be to practice as one parcel, if that's the desire of the owner, but it's not a requirement for this development. If we had a new building coming in, we would definitely be looking at that, because we require that new building to hit the setbacks off of that property home, that divides the two parts. So the parking area, we don't have that issue. So you're one ownership.
And just for, as it says today, unless something's changed, the owner of the property is not the owner, so Kincaid, Mike Kincaid, I don't know the exact business name, owns that property, and so at this point, it's a lease scenario, what Doc was telling, I think there's been some discussion, you know, future possibility that they would acquire. I think our discussions with them, this is actually the only facility they have where they act by the lease, most all of their other facilities that they have around the country are owned facilities, so this is a little different for them. That could have happened, if they acquired, for reference, that Dot Foods is not the owner of the shop, they are, tend to acquire that. Not unusual, they have a number of facilities and the electric part that are not owned that.
If I could make one comment?
Please. If you'll come up and just make names to get the record, please.
Absolutely. So, name's David Dunne, I'm the senior transportation manager for Dot Foods. Wanted to refer to Chuck's comment about the fueling station. These are refrigerated units, so we will have a fuel tank on site to top off our refrigerated units, or one of these are frozen loads and refrigerated loads. Those are, will be contracted to World Services, World Fuel Services. These are certified approved tanks that are monitored very carefully, have monitoring systems on them. We have in our design a spot for those tanks, they'll be above ground, they'll be fenced, so you won't be able to see those from the road around there, so.
And that'll also have a secondary containment system, correct?
Yes, secondary containment, I mean, there is, it's a, we've been down the show before, so.
Right.
So I want to make a comment with their, what's your?
Thank you. I'd almost tell you, the above-ground tanks are the preferred over underground tanks. Had a few of those in my days in municipal work, where we had large enough fleet, and again, we would use the above-ground tanks, because, you know, the good thing about an above-ground tank, number one, it's a tank, it's a concrete structure, so if the tank fails, it's still got a concrete structure. Number two, when things are underground, you don't always know they're leaking until it's too late, so. A lot of pluses, I would say, other than you're sealed to that system.
The other, the other nice thing in this location is that it doesn't get affected by groundwater level changes, because they're so close to the river, we could have that water table shifting, and so anchoring those underground tanks and things like that can cause shifting and that, so this is, it's nicer to have it above ground.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the preliminary development plan for 9207, 9233 Wood End Road with the four stipulations as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the preliminary development plan for 9207 and 9233 Wood End Road with the four stipulations as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the preliminary development plan for 9207 and 9233 Wood End Road. Would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Adams?
Yes.
McTaggart?
Yes.
We need a motion for the final development plan with the proposed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the final development or accept the final development plan for 9207, 9233 Wood End Road. Would those same stipulations apply to the final as?
Yeah, yeah, I would just make sure your motion includes those conditions and the deviations that I've shown in the summary.
Including those four items recommended by the planning commission and those deviations mentioned in the presentation.
It's been a motion on second to approve the final development plans with the stipulations mentioned. Would the clerk please call over?
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Again, I need to recuse myself.
Adams?
Yes.
McTaggart?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be reconsider recommendation of approval from the planning commission regarding an application to rezon property 10625, 1035 Cod Drive, adopt ordinance number 1031, finalizing the same.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll just correct one thing, there is a typo in that recommendation, it's 10625 and 10635 Cod Drive, sorry about that. With that, this is the old Jackson's BP site, you're familiar with that, so these are two parts of the property there, one that has the convenience store and fueling on it, and the other one, which is the vacant property just to the east of the Jackson's convenience store. On July 1, 2020, the property owner filed an application to rezon the land at those two addresses to C-3, general commercial, it's currently zoned C-2, which is commercial retail. The area proposed to be rezoned is two parcels consisting of approximately 2.4 acres overall. It is, as I mentioned before, the property is currently used for service station, convenience store, and parking purposes. What's triggering the rezoning request is that the applicant, who will have to come forward with the preliminary and final development plan as part of this process, is wanting to introduce diesel fuel and truck services for that piece. Also, the current service station part, the repair part, that kind of piece, is technically considered a non-conforming use right now. It's legal because it was established under the old zoning code under C-2, we now require that that has a C-3 zone, so they could operate just the way they are as a non-conforming service station or repair station for that sense, but that triggers a whole other series of issues if they come into expansion. So we felt it was better for them to come forward and ask for the rezoning to C-3, take care of that non-conformity, but also what they're proposing with some of the truck uses may potentially need that C-3 zoning in the future too, so that's the reason behind the rezoning proposal. We also suggested to this staff that they go through the rezoning process first before providing their development plan, because if there was no desire by the city to actually rezon the property, there would be no sense in spending what would be considerable amounts of money developing a preliminary plan and a final development plan if the rezoning were rejected. So that's why it's coming in in a stepped process. So you're getting the rezoning first, they will have to come back with a development plan, which will again be reviewed by the planning. So you're getting the rezoning first, they will have to come back with a development plan, which will again be reviewed by the planning commission by yourself. If there's any questions on that process, just let me know. On August nineteenth, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to the item. City staff and one individual spoke at public hearing, there were no objections to the proposed use as part of that public hearing. And there have been no protest petitions received by the city in regard to this item. It's important to note that the planning commission discussed the item and took action on two motions. So I want to just clarify this. The first motion was to deny the rezoning request. If that motion failed, right, well, the failure of a motion to deny does not mean that the planning commission is approving or recommending approval of the rezoning. It just simply means that they did not pass the motion for denial of the request. So then they took a second motion, it was to approve the rezoning, that motion passed. So the planning commission did pass a motion three to two, split vote on the rezoning of this property from C two to C three as part of the recommendation.
So, so a second motion was made because it was a tie at two to two?
No, it was a two, three vote. The first motion was to deny, or to recommend denial of the rezoning request.
And that, that was two to two?
It was two to three. So it failed. So it was two, two to three, there were five members voting. Two voted for the motion to deny, three voted against the motion to deny. So it failed, didn't pass. So then a second motion was brought forward to approve, that motion passed three to two.
So it just reversed?
Yes.
Okay, got you.
But, but we want to make sure in the record, you always want to make sure in the record, is that really the recommendation? Just because a motion failed does not necessarily mean that they're rejecting it or approving something else. So you do that second step to ensure, are you really saying you want to approve or recommend approval of this? I will say that part of the concern was with the C three zoning, it does open up other uses of greater intensity to be on that property than what C two was limited to. So the planning commission had some concerns about, had some discussion about, do we really want to open up that opportunity to some of these other uses? What I will say as part of this process and, and draft ordinance as part of this process is we have two reversionary conditions that go with our rezoning. Because we require a development plan in this process, basically those two reversionary pieces, and I'm going to go to them very quickly here. Dave, how many members are on the planning commission? There are seven, seven total. So we have five of the seven there.
There were two, half one?
Correct, I believe that's correct. No? I was looking for Katie.
Oh, yeah.
I believe that's correct.
I agree.
Yeah.
What's the history of the ten minutes of the planning commission?
We're, we're pretty good.
Pretty solid. I mean, there, there have been, I, I think we checked last year, I don't know if it ended up this year. And we had a number of meetings where we just didn't have any activity.
This is a hybrid meeting or virtual?
This is in, this is in person.
This is in person.
And so generally speaking, I mean, there's, there have been people missing for various reasons. I don't know that anybody missed more than two meetings last year.
My, my two cents worth is this should go back to the planning commission. Malot personally, I haven't had enough time to look at it and connect them, but I think we'll do it if necessary.
Well, I think every process. So let, let's talk about two things so that you do that. I'll address that item. Let me address first what's going on here too, because the planning commission, their legitimate concern has to do with that growing intensity of uses. So what I want to do is make sure that council understands that even if you approve this ordinance tonight, any change to zoning is not going to be published until there's an approved development plan. So we have a, we have a reversionary condition that requires that the development plan has to come forward in this zoning district, in the C three zoning district. So they'd have to do kind of what Doc Foods has done tonight, bring forward a preliminary and a final plan. They're also going to have to plack the property. So they would have to bring that forward within the next twelve months. If there's a failure to get something passed on that development plan, the rezoning reverts back to C two. So it's caught in this kind of, I'm going to call it a procedural limbo if you will. Because the concern that the planning commission has is a legitimate concern. They don't necessarily want that greater intensity of use. But if the property is designed right, they may say, okay, it's now limited to these uses under these conditions with this plan. So that may take that concern away, or it may not, it just depends. So I just want you to be aware of your, if you approve the rezoning tonight, it's not like it turns around and the map gets republished tomorrow with that new zone. It will hold until we have a development plan that's approved. So that's one thing I just want to make sure people understand. Usually we get this all as one thing, if it's a solid development coming forward. In this case with a small business person, we just felt if there's no desire to rezone, we didn't want them spending the money that it would take to do the development plans just to get rejected.
Are there any other C threes right around there?
No, the only C three property we have is up at the hotel site at the I seventy and a hundred tenth.
So.
There is other C two on, on the corridor. And you also, in the comprehensive plan and the K thirty-two study, both of which have been through, it indicates that the desire is to have commercial uses along K thirty-two. Okay, so that's kind of where we're working from is there's a commercial desire, but it's what uses do you really want and where is that?
And that, and that was something that I, I mean, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it or not, but when we're thinking big picture and we're thinking ten years down the road, what are we wanting that corridor to look like? And if we're wanting it to be a safe place for people to, right back, so you know, we've got the Gorge Route bike run that goes from Kansas City to Lawrence down K thirty-two. Is that the best place that we want? Semi-trucks pulling out, have we done any safety studies or anything to, to see if that would be the best?
I, the, the studies that I'm aware of along K thirty-two are pretty general. So the K thirty-two study does indicate potential future pedestrian use, bike trail, those kinds of things along the corridor. So that is in the study, and that could be something, so I'm going to go back to Councilman Malot's question at this point and say, that could be a reason that you want the planning commission to look closer at those studies and consider the case a little further in light of that information. That could be a reason to go back. So if we're going back to planning commission, we do need kind of some direction as to what we're wanting the planning commission to look at.
I'm kind of thinking about the Leavenworth Commission approving the, the mining operation and dredging operation in the soda that's supposed to be transporting raw sand through Evansville, which would almost have to be thirty-two highway. It's like with two hundred trucks a day, trucks a day, which would have to be four on the trucks a day. Because they got to, when they come in, they got to go back. Alling those raw materials on this highway, but we're trying to improve things around here and have that increased traffic. I think it needs to go back and those considerations need to be discussed by the planning commission and then brought back. And if there's other options for the C, C three zoning, then we need something like that.
What are the other hoops that they would have to go through to put, to do this development just the way it's drawn?
Well, the way it's drawn, and this is always the confusing part, right? Because when they're coming for rezoning, what we try to ask them to do is provide the city with a concept of what they're wanting to do. Right? So all you have at that point is a concept step, that's what's in your package, you're not approving that. Couple hoops that they're going to have with this, for instance, is KDOT. Anything they want to do with access in driveways, KDOT's going to have a review, comment and approval authority on. So KDOT may say, you can't have four access points, you can only have two. They may do that, okay, because they have access management on K thirty-two. So they've got to go through the K thirty-two process in that sense. They will then also have to go through our development plan review process at the preliminary and final step, which then puts a lot more meat onto what is your concept. You really start doing your engineering studies, your traffic analysis, all of that work by and seeing stormwater analysis. All that now has to come to light. And essentially you're making a commitment to what you're going to develop there. Landscape plans, science plans, all of that is part of it. I will tell you, I've had a call, in this process, I've had a call from an individual that wanted to put in ice vending, I don't want to call it a, it's not a cabinet. It's one of those machines that could go up to and, you know, it generates a block of ice and pay whatever it is. You know, there are a lot of people who use them when they go boating and stuff like that. And what I had to tell that person is to work with the landowner, because if you want to do that, that needs to be part of that development plan. So we understand circulation on the property and what's going on. Especially when you've got truck traffic, automobile traffic, plus recreational traffic. Now we even have the room for all those different maneuvers as that create a conflict. So they're going to have to go through a lot more hoops.
Well, they've got the storage tanks and all kinds of things they have to.
All that.
But K D H.
Right, they'll have, right, for the fuel stuff and everything, they'll have to go through that. But generally those are prefab tank, you know, they're, they're pretty much basically, you know, my, yeah, they're going to meet the permit requirements there. It's a matter of where you're citing those and how do they fit on the property.
The speed limit's fifty-five mile an hour.
Is it fifty-five or forty-five at that point?
It's fifty-five.
Is it fifty-five?
It's fifty-five.
East of there, larger forty-five, west of there, of the Jacksons at fifty-five.
That's a great concern from, big, long, slow trucks going out there. That and the way it's drawn is the grade is remaining low. So those trucks are pulling out on a pretty steep incline.
The way that's drawn, yes.
To the highway, which greatly impedes their ability to, 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 um. I, I personally, my thoughts are I'd really like to see, if they can put together a plan that makes sense, I'm a little concerned about a residence next door, a professional building down the access of people heading west, accessing that is, is of a concern. I personally would rather see them go to KDOT, because I, I really would not like making a change to it. If KDOT's going to say, no, no. So I, or, or the change that KDOT requires is going to be not agreeable for the development, for the owners. So I think there are a lot of hoops that, that really.
I don't think the property owner is not here to manage this.
Oh, okay, so.
So, Kevin, start on the civil engineer that got hired for the, for the development.
I don't know if you, if you want to ask questions to that extent or not.
I'm, I'm just stating my, my opinion, but.
Sure.
But something can be remedied.
Would it trigger a traffic? I'm just, I'm just.
There'll have to be a traffic study done, KDOT will require.
It's been done.
It's been done.
We, we just, we just completed it last week.
That would be, that would be required as part of the development plan process. It's not required for the rezoning application.
I understand, um, not wanting them to spend a lot of money if that's not the direction we're heading. So, and so I understand the catch twenty-two there, i- if we're going to say, hey, we don't want to do something like that. And my concerns are it doesn't really match the, the neighboring businesses. But then on top of that, down the road, we're looking at eventually trying to make our downtown area more user friendly, more recreational friendly. I just don't know if this is in that picture. So honestly, I, I would hate for them to spend a lot of money and, and go about getting the plating done and the plants done. If, if we wouldn't go with it anyway. But, and the rest of the council might feel differently, but I wouldn't want to do that and then that would tie up potentially uses and, and what we might want back to be in the future. I just don't know if it really fits.
Dave, you want to go over please? I think it would be helpful what their options are and what it takes as far as above, if, if, how many have to vote for or against any of those.
So obviously one of your options is to support the recommendation of the planning commission. You could make a motion to essentially accept their recommendation and approve the rezoning to C three, which would take just a simple majority vote. Okay, so just four. Yeah, take four out of you, out of your group, okay? The other option is you could choose to remand the item back to the planning commission as Mr. Malot has indicated. Again, that is a simple majority of, of vote to do that. But you wanted your statement of reasons why you're sending it back and what you want the planning commission to look at as part of that process. And we, I think I heard at least a few of those items, we just want to make sure we're reiterating it if that's the direction you want to go there. Then item three would be could take action other than what the planning commission recommendation is. And that would require a two-thirds majority vote of the governing body. So includes the mayor, again, it's about governing body. But all of those options, two-thirds again is four out of the six. So you're still four out of six. But those are basically the three options you have.
The fourth and final option I'm reading is to make no motion, don't die zoning for lack of motion.
Yeah, there would be, I think there's a shot, shot clock clause on that, they'd have to double check that real quick, Michael, I don't remember.
Sure it is.
I don't know what it is.
And, and I wanted to ask something too. So is, there was a sunset clause on the, if it did pass, the rezoning passes, that it reverts back in twelve months, is that correct?
Correct. So if there's a failure in that twelve month period to get a development plan approved and a plaque approved for that property, it would then revert to the C two, would not, you would never publish the map with C three zoning.
So until you, until you publish an ordinance, so a zoning is an ordinance, until that ordinance is officially published, it is not an effective ordinance, any type of ordinance, but specifically the planning. And we don't always have the reversionary clause, but most of it, many times we have every, we have the zoning and the, and the planning all in one package. I mean, they, they take separate votes. But what we do in this case, if, if it were to be approved with those stipulations is we won't publish that ordinance. So we hold that ordinance until next time as the preliminary and final plaque is approved, if that's the case. At which time then we get approved and then the zoning technically changes. So that, that's what we mean by reversionary, is, is you've adopted the ordinance. But it, it takes two other pieces, it takes the signature of mayor and it takes, right, because you're authorizing a mayor signing the ordinance, and it takes the publication of the ordinance in the official, the H five.
And the publication doesn't take place until the preliminary and final plans are accepted, right?
Well, it'd be you, it would be you, right. It would come, the planning commission would give you a recommendation and it would be your decision.
Just so we, just so you understand, it's, it's a little convoluted, it's not archetypical in that sense, but that's, that's how reversionary. You can't rezone a piece of property technically, so you can't go rezone something and then go and change it back unless you go through a public hearing. And anytime you zone a piece of property and you try to downzone that piece of ours, if something's zone commercial, let's say you're trying to make it residential and that wasn't what the owner wanted, that, that, you know, that is considered in most law as a taking. Because if you reduce the rights to the use of land, that's considered a, a taking. And so that's why you seldom see cities, except when they do a broad rezoning, you don't go rezone something and then the city turn around and rezone it to something less. Sometimes we'll rezone it the other way, but typically, that's why most of your property is left in an ad type of zoning district. In fact, generally your, your, you know, biggest properties somewhat, in some respects, more restrictive in the sense that in order to do anything other than ad work, you got to go rezone your property, so that's the truth.
I understand that, I just don't, I mean, I, I don't want to mislead and say, oh, let's do that and then have a, a revision if, like, my personal intention and thought is that it might not fit there and I, you know, I don't want to say, yeah, do it, and then they'll spend a bunch of money and then maybe vote differently later, so I just don't feel like.
And I, I think that's where I'm at also. Just struggling with, does this fit with what we think that should go right there on K thirty-two? We already know the challenges that we have there, and if we are looking at our comprehensive plan that, or, you know, walking, traffic, bicycling, whatever that may look like in the future, I don't know that putting in a truck stop is the, is the right thing. If I had a, if I had something in front of me that I could, you know, stick a fork in it, cut it up, look at it and see what it is, I, maybe I could, you know. But I don't, I think.
I, maybe I could, but, I don't, I think changing the zoning now and then opening it up to some other things that could potentially come in there, I don't think that's the direction I'm interested in going.
And I, I'd like, I agree with both of you on that. And this is kind of challenging for me because I'm primarily a property rights guy. You own the property, you know, you've, you've got, you've got the first law, or first rights and so, but, in the overall scheme of things in the plan, and we have the, the tri-city plan that we have put together, it's been a lot of money on it, a lot of, of planning in that, and that corner being with the, with the sign of crossings and the future development through there and so forth, it, it just, I'm like Commissioner K, or Councilman K, Har, I really wouldn't want to give a false hope.
But, and I want to be real careful about a couple of things, so, one is, understand the property, the two parcels right now are Zone C2. So there are some commercial developments under the C2 that could still be pursued if you deny the C3. So there's still that piece there. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. The second part of that, when I hear you talking about kind of digging the fork in, that's kind of why you get that little bit of a concept planning, because I think the concept, at least as far as I understand from the applicant in that, is still roughly what they're trying to do. There would have to be the landscaping added, there would have to be the conditions with KDOT, there would have to be, but as far as the potential use of the property, the wanting to have the diesel fuel, things like that, you've got a rough idea of what they're proposing and I think they're trying to stay within that concept. What we're talking about is how many more details do we hang on to that, at what cost?
If, if there is, if the, if, if there's a motion and, and adoption of denial, how long is the period when they can come back for?
Well, they could not, they, they could come back for rezoning, okay? Because the development plan is really the issue. If that was denied, they would not be able to come back with a new development, or the same development plan for a year. They could come back with a different development plan in that period of time. There's nothing that precludes another request to rezone the property for a second. It's really when you get into the development stage, okay? But you'd have to have some real compelling reasons that you would change your mind later on to go to C3. If you're, if you're thinking that way, um, it's, again, you have to have much more reasoning to sit there and say, I didn't accept C3, but now I'm six months down the road and I'm gonna accept it now in the same location. You still have the ability to look at C3 of any location along K32. But what you're giving me guidance on, what you would be giving Michael and I guidance on tonight, is if you said, hey, C3 is just more intense in the uses that we want along here because of the K32 corridor and because of what the comp plan says and things like that, understand that what we're gonna be telling people who come in with development applications along K32 is, if you go on after C3, it's not a very good likelihood that you're gonna get C3. You will likely get C2, but it does give us policy guidance to allow us when we're talking to people to say, here's a recent pursuit. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking for here, because the comp plan, you know, the comp plan's a general plan, so it's commercial, the K32 study is where you start getting into the walking trails, you start getting into some of the other stuff. And so what you would be doing tonight, if you were to say we're denying the C3, is what we're kind of saying is, C2 may be the most intense commercial level that we want to see along K32, unless something really compelling.
And while, and while we're doing that, I just wanted to mention to, to the, to the property owners, to the business owner, thank you for your interest in investing in our community. I, I don't take that lightly. I think all of us appreciate any, any business owner that's wanting to invest and, and put roots here. That's, that's a really big deal and we do appreciate that. Maybe we can find a better location for them. I just don't want to misspent extra money in, in the UPOC if it's, if it's not a good fit right there.
And that's, that's your fault. I think I've done the best to advise you, it's really.
If there are no motions for anything, and I'm not hearing, we would consider this thing temporarily stalled?
But if you don't mind, and, and, and we can move on, and if we need to come back to this, if you want to hold this item over.
You want to, you know.
I opened a table, I opened a table to, to, if you'd be, holding it over so Dave can go, we want to verify.
I just want to check, if, if there's no motion made, I want to make sure that we all know what we're getting at.
Some codes have, like, sometimes it says if there's no motion, then it may be, that it passes. In some places, maybe there's no motion, it doesn't, but, you know, you have a, you have a recommendation of approval from the planning commission, so we need to make sure we give you proper knowledge on that item. Dave can go search that so we can just hold this item, I say, hold it over. We won't take an action on it, move on to the next item.
Do we, do we need a motion to table this item?
No, I don't think we need to do anything. I just, I think we can just hold the action.
Well, we just consider that it is tabled.
Yeah, that's a very strong next item.
When you say come back later, that, that's not.
Yes, before we leave.
Before we leave. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna delay this, uh, this, this item until further notice. Uh, before we get too much further, Tom, I'm, I'm going to apologize that you understand that we've got all this stuff going on. But anyway, I would like to recognize our state senator and our commissioner-in-law, Tom Burrows. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure, Mayor.
Would you like to make presentations?
Actually, after, after the cares item, after a few other agenda items, if that's all right, Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm gonna catch you at the very end then.
Okay.
Before we go into reports and, and comments from the council. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. You just got handed an extra item here. We noticed during that conversation that we inadvertently left out Section 10.05 of our UPOC modifications, which we've already discussed previously, so there's no change in what was presented to you at the last meeting. We just, when we were cutting and pasting, we just left that piece out and we did want to make sure that's part of ordinance 1030 for tonight. Again, uh, we've brought this item generally to view on two previous occasions. Generally, we have spoken about the Section 10.05 and we spent some time on Section 10.29. 10.05 regards the unlawful discharge of a firearm. As you recall, we made basically two general adjustments. One is we defined the term reckless and two, uh, we added a Section C that says, uh, the section doesn't apply to the non-reckless discharge of a firearm on one's own property for the sub-profits of target practice by the owner or invited guests. So no change in that, and that's what we discussed and why I know we didn't vote, that was generally the consensus. Uh, 10.29 is related to a violation of public health order, which was an addition to the UPOC in, uh, 2020 and it was requested that be deleted in its entirety from which is included in the ordinance. So what we spent some time on at the last meeting had to do with 10.06, which involves the discharge of air guns, air rifles, bows and arrows, slingshot BB guns, or paintball guns. Now, first, and I know that the chief has reminded me of this several times, these are not firearms. Firearms are defined in the UPOC specifically, so these are not firearms. So if I use the word discharge or weapon, I mean that in a general way, not as a firearm. So don't confuse 10.05 when we're talking about firearms and 10.06, which involves these other things. As you recall, most of the discussion was around, well, what is the shoot zone? Where's the shoot zone? Who should be in the shoot zone? Who shouldn't be in the shoot zone? And quite honestly, after spending time looking at this, it somewhat made more sense to simply eliminate this whole discussion of shoot zones. So what we have before you does the following thing. The first section, A, is exactly as it is in the UPOC, which basically says, you can discharge all of those things inside a building or other shelter that prevents the projectiles from leaving the building. All right, that's, that's what's the standard law. We then added a section that says, but that section doesn't apply except in your RS, RDS, which are basically neighborhoods that are on Seward, and R2 and R3. Now, we have zoning maps, we can provide zoning maps, but we don't necessarily need to make them part of this code because we already have those. And we added the ability, if somebody came in and said, I want to set up targets because I teach kids in the Boy Scouts or some other thing, without putting a lot of detail in here, that a person will put together some process, where a person could come in and ask for that request from the chief or his district. Now, I'll tell you, we've never had, in my fourteen years, I don't think ever even an issue or request or discussion about this section of the code. And then the last part of it was, and I don't know how we had an R ordinance, but we showed it as a Class B misdemeanor, when the UPOC, at least for the last few years, has it as a Class C misdemeanor. So we've just corrected that. So the language in A and D is exactly as it is in the UPOC. It's the language that was in the UPOC in 2019, it's the language in the UPOC for 2020, and it was probably the language in the UPOC for many years. So what we're trying to do again is simplify. There, there's no need to have a shoot zone if you simply say you can use these things in the city, except for, quite honestly, your, your most dense areas. We also took out anything about bow hunting, and the reason is, is if you can discharge a bow and arrow and you have a hunting license and you're on your property, you're already legal. And if you go onto somebody else's, so, so some of the things was in there, said you had to be in a shoot zone, we don't need a shoot zone. Number two, you had to be on your own property. And number three, you had to have the permission of the owner if you want on somebody else's property. Well, you pretty much have to have permission of the owner to go on somebody else's property, because if they call and say, these people are trespassing on my property, the police are gonna come and say, you can't drive that property. They may have a hunting license, but you can't go on somebody else's property and, and go hump without their permission. So what we've done is basically just stripped that thing down to say, let's get rid of all the access. And again, Chief and I spoke a number of times, we can't even really tell you where all this originated from, to be quite honest. It originated before our times and we've both been here fourteen years relative to the city. So our recommendation is pretty much strip that part down to what proposed to you and, uh, the edit portions we've already discussed and reviewed. And if you would be amenable to that, I would just simply say that we would adopt ordinance 1030, including the language of 10.5, and we'll, we'll correct the published ordinance. And it'll include 10.5, the amendments of 10.5, the amendments of 10.6, the amendments of 10.13, and the amendments of 10.29.
I would like, and I'm sorry to be a pain in the butt about this, but I don't feel like any of us have had time to even look over 10.5 since we just got it this evening, and I'd rather any ordinance.
Well, this was from the last meeting, we made no changes to it.
Well, the, the discharge, um, the discharge of firearms was a discharge of lawful self-defense, um, sections.
We can't really amend B, that's state statute.
So there's, well, we did add.
We added a C. But, but that was done at the last meeting. This is nothing new that we didn't, this, what you're seeing here was what was presented or discussed.
So target practice, we had that verged at the last meeting?
Yes. Yeah, we didn't do anything with, I just, I forgot to put it in the ordinance, but, but the target practice out, did that?
I remember discussing it, I'm sorry. Am I the only one that doesn't remember?
Then, then why did we not vote on it last time?
Because you wanted to vote about the shoot zones on 10.05. And, and I, I, I suggested go ahead and vote on everything, we could bring 10.6 back, what the recommendation was, let's just wait one more meeting and do it all. So we have not, any change to that from the last council meeting.
Could you tell me what the definition of reckless is, since it's not actually on here? It says the term of reckless is defined in ordinance of KSA 21 dash 5202 as amended, but it's not actually.
And I had it in the last agenda memo that I presented, I don't have it in front of me, but it is by state statute.
I'll let you see my computer.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna go grab my phone too, but.
So how did, how did, would this apply, uh, and you know, we had the one situation, one, well, back, um, at, down along the river, where.
10.05 or 10.06?
Or just being able to hunt.
Right.
Down along the river. As long as it's not done recklessly, they're still good, that's still.
If they, if they, if they're doing the, if those firearms discharge a lawfully take wildlife, or so in other words, they have a license and permit and, you know, they're doing so, then, then they're, then they would be permitted. Because there was never a shoot zone as it related to 10.5.
Right.
She was never applying. So there's effectively no place in the city that you couldn't hunt. There are places in the city that such action would be reckless, you know, so. And, and of course, that's ultimately a determination of court.
Did you find it there?
It's, it's kind of sprinkled throughout the, the language of, it doesn't say really, or it's, it's broken out, at least according to 215202 that I found. But culpable mental state are classified according to relevant.
Yeah, go to J, 5202J specifically.
A person acts recklessly or is reckless when such person consciously disregards the substantial and unjustifiable risk that circumstances exist or that a result will follow, and such disregard constitutes a gross deviation from the standard of care which a reasonable person would exercise in the situation.
So we're not redefining reckless. Reckless is a state definition, a state statute.
Well, I'm okay with that. I would just prefer that the definition be right here, because that was one of our issues before, is we had someone who was target shooting in a safe manner and they were told, you're not allowed to do that here. And so.
Well, at the last meeting, we, when we discussed that, was to put the term reckless in accordance and, and not put the full definition in there, so I.
Why would we not do that?
I mean, other than you're repeating something that's already in statute.
If it's already there, you don't need to repeat it, in other words.
Well, I mean, it, it wasn't easily, I, I don't know. I, I personally, I think the, the more clear we can make this for our people, the better, instead of saying, okay, go dig through these statutes to find a definition. I, I, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, I just feel like the clearer we can make it, the less confusion we're gonna have with people getting.
I don't, you can guarantee they won't.
I'm not sure it's much clear about it.
I believe, it, because our conversations before even in the meeting were, okay, define reckless. I mean, that's what you told us several times, okay, define reckless. And so in here, it just says, unlawful discharge is a reckless discharge or the, um, non-reckless discharge. So again, if you're, we're gonna say, well, define reckless, that's why I said it might clarify it for our community if we could just add the definition.
If you want the definition, I mean, that, that's y'all's call, I mean, again, when we last met, that would be.
Michael.
You could make that a hot link too, if.
I, I'm just, yeah, I'm, to that point, if I'm putting the definition in the actual ordinance, does that open us up? If that state language changes at any time, but our ordinance on our books does not change?
That's my concern, and you could just put that as a hot link and there couldn't be, that would drive you to the.
And, and a lot of our, a lot of our ordinances in the actual code, it does have a, like an annotated little footnote that will lead you to the direct, uh, direct statute, and we could, we could put that as front-facing as we can, yeah.
And we put a, a, a connection to that in the. So it would highlight that.
As long as it's easy to find, like, if you're looking through and it's not easy to find and we didn't even have UPOC on our page.
And, yeah, to, to that point, as soon as this gets finalized, the intent is, we'll have a dedicated page with code of ordinances and completed code of ordinances, and then a separate one related to the UPOC that pulls out and highlights the specific changes that we made as its own easily navigatable and viable page.
And again, just for, for reference, when we talk about the. And again, just for reference, when we talk about the UPOC, we are only talking about offenses that are in the municipal court. So, if you could have charges, right, that still may talk about, there's other, there's other statutes around weapons and guns that would apply and even apply the term reckless, but they are not municipal court. These are the only ones that can be filed in a municipal court. So, I mean, you could have filings of other courts that are other than misdemeanor. Technically, these things could get, because it's a state statute, so a state statute could get filed in the district court. In Wyandotte County, generally speaking, they will not take cases that have been put into UPOC to handle misdemeanor cases. They just generally don't handle most misdemeanor cases. I mean, if the sheriff's office does, because that's the court, right? But I mean, municipal courts are around the locality and it's law enforcement. So, just so you know, it does, it's not just because we put something in here or don't put something in here, but it automatically says the law changed that state. Only dealing with what can be filed in the municipal court and city management.
I totally understand.
Okay.
But what I'm referencing is things that happened right here in the city with our own people. And so, in conversations before, we said, "Okay, define reckless," because that was the confusion.
We'll put, we can put, at least, so the way the code is set up, so in the code, if you go to our code of ordinances and it says penalty is described in section, I think, 1.09.005, right? We just have a standard penalty code. So, we don't put in every section, it's a Class C, the fines, this, but you go back to that section and it basically says a violation of our municipal code is punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 and/or, or in term of jail for 179 days or less, or both, right? So, I mean, the judge has that, always has that authority. It's that. Most things should then set by some P, P ordinances or things like that. So, I mean, that, you know, traffic violations, there's a set 15, there's a set, if you're going 15 over, this is what the fine is. Most things are having, some of them prescribed. So, I would suggest we just add that as, it'd be a highlighted link of code. You click on it and it'll make you the statutory reference.
And it will, can it take you right to J so you can get right to the definition of J?
I believe so. We'll have to give it a poll of approval, but I don't know why they can't, so.
I think that would be very unofficial.
And that way, it would be current, they'd change the code, link to the current code.
And I think what we've done, I'm, you know, bringing awareness to it and brain fly, I think, is enlightened a lot of folks. I mean, even the education at the police department level to let them know where we're at, where the councils went with this, that it is not just across the board, no, you cannot go do, can't target shoot. There are exceptions for this to happen and that it's not just a blanket, no, you can't other than, so I think, I think doing what we've done is, I think it's what I set out to accomplish.
Because of my understanding, MAP is no longer part of-
No shoot zone, no shoot zone.
Okay. So, MAP is no longer part of anything published or-
And I think that definitely cleans it up because it was so confusing. I mean, when you say shoot zone to me originally, hit man, hey, this is where I can go shoot.
Right.
Right? So, anyway, but one last thing, and I don't want to beat this thing to death, but so the person that is doing the archery training or teaching, that, I mean, we know that that's been brought up, how do, how do they legally do it now?
He is in the R1, so he is not-
Okay, let's say they weren't in the R1.
If they were in a residential development, they were across the street.
Yes.
And they had, and if they wanted to shoot in their garage or whatever, they could do it.
Sure, it's contained.
If they, if they have some situation where they're doing Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, something, something, teaching kids bow and arrow, they can come request an exception from the city through the police chief and, you know-
And no charge?
Well, we weren't planning on a charge, but again, not, but I mean, but, but I mean, mainly, you know, we just want to ensure then what they're doing is safe and that there's, you know, are they doing it for five days?
Yeah, are you shooting towards a chain link fence and something's not going to stop an arrow?
Yeah, we don't want to set up a permanent archer range for every kid in the neighborhood to come shoot whenever they want to.
No, but I guess what I'm saying, there is a mechanism in place that would allow under the right circumstances for somebody to be able to do that if it ever arose.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying. That's why I made a motion to adopt ordinance 1030 for the 2020 uniform, UPOC Uniform Public Offense Code. And with, yeah, with the amendments mentioned.
Second to adopt ordinance number 1030 with the 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code with the amendments. Would the clerk please call roll?
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda will be consider resolution 202111 regarding cities acceptance of CARES Act.
Well, as you know, we were fortunate enough to receive $449,400 as part of the distribution of CARE Act dollars in roughly the amount in Wyandotte County of $37.3 million. I brought to you, I believe, at our last meeting, a breakdown of the request which is attached. But prior to us being able to formally receive the dollars, and I'm happy to say the county received its permission from the state, I believe, on Friday, I was on a call here right before this meeting, that they now have authority to release the funds. And so, from the public entities, they need a resolution that basically says, yes, we accept the funds, we understand that there's the federal, a number of federal rules that we have to follow and that we will do so and that we will provide the necessary reports to, yes.
And I didn't, I didn't see it listed on here, but the numbers that you mentioned is of your very first sentence, I believe. Would you tell me what those were?
We're receiving 449,400.
Out of a total of?
37.3 million.
37 million dollars, we got less than half of it.
449,400. And it was based on basically a hundred dollars per person is what it works out to. A hundred dollars per person in total, the county, and I, it was 200, I want to say around $270, 278, I don't recall exactly, I'm talking my head, but-
Say it again.
Excuse me?
Say it good again.
The county, so, so the county gets the money and then they sub, we're a sub allocation. So, the 37.3 million that the county received was based on population, the county's population, plus $5 million because of unemployment and poverty, I believe, and the other two, the other two aspects.
And Mike, would you can remind me what, what's the population of the county, 2020?
The county is about 165,000 plus. I don't remember the, the term.
And that counts as?
The county, the county is all.
That counts as?
Yes, that includes that, right.
But yet, it was a hundred dollars a person?
Yes.
So, that's, how's, how does that come up to 37 million dollars?
Well, not all of the monies went to cities. So, a portion, I believe, 75 dollar per person went to the county health department. And I'm trying to, nine dollars, nine dollars, I believe, went to the county, that's the county, and the remainder went to 501(c)(3) and other nonprofit organizations.
So, we received 224 dollars per person.
That's right.
The county did.
The county did, right? Right.
And we're receiving a hundred-
Dollars per person.
And the county received how much of that? Did you say nine dollars worth of that?
So, the unified government, right, so city, county. So, the city portion also received a hundred dollar per person. And they have, and I'm roughing them, they have about 152,000 that live in the city. And then you've got Bonner, and then you've got us to make up, make up the rest of it. And so, the three cities all received the same proportional share by population, a hundred dollar per person based on population. The county received a nine dollar allocation for county-related expenditures. Now, I would tell you that the cities, the two cities here, us and Bonner Springs, were not in favor of that allocation. We felt like we had three governing bodies, each of the three governing bodies could receive the same amount of money, and then those governing bodies could make an allocation however they felt was appropriate for their community.
Right.
So, that was the discussion, but ultimately it was approved.
And that was a panel of how many? Eleven, 10?
Well, I think there was nine or 10. There were three commissioners, myself-
Nine or 10, or am I?
I don't recall if it was nine or 10, but-
Three commissioners, so that leaves six.
Three commissioners. You had representative from the public health department, you had an assistant county administrator, you had the director, chief financial officer, one from Bonner Springs, one from Edwardsville. I believe that's who was on the committee that were voting. There were other people that were involved for support that-
So, other than the two that were representing Bonner and Edwardsville, I mean, the interest of the remaining seven or so, or eight, were at the city level, KCK or UG?
But they were, they were members of the unified government, yes.
Disproportionately represented.
Just for numbers sake, at nine dollars is 1.485 million, I guess. And so, what portion of that comes to us, which is part of the county?
I don't have an answer.
Or is this the usual answer where we don't know, but you get something?
Where we don't get anything.
Well, like, like the services that we asked.
Mike, is this, is that nine dollars, is that what funded the health department? Or is that all for-
The health department received a separate funding.
So, isn't that be the only county services we really received?
I mean, you have different courts, you have sheriff's office, I mean-
For the transaction.
It's irrelevant for the-
I'm just, I'm not here to defend it one way or the other. And then there was a portion that was allocated for the administrative portion, I think it was four, four dollars and then a fifty percent.
Mike, do you happen to know, did we get anything in addition for our police and fire department, or is that to be included in our city money at the hundred dollars per person?
It's included in our money.
And was Kansas City Kansas this name?
Yes.
Because I, when I saw the breakdown, it looked like the KCK fire department had over 800,000 allocated to them, and then the KCK police department had over 40,000 allocated to them.
Well, the unified, so the unified government, the way that they processed it, they had each individual department make some notes. So, and some department might have had a note together. So, police department can make a note, fire department can make a note, works, parks, whoever made those requests. And so, they, everybody submitted their submittals and internally inside the UG, they whittled those down. And then ultimately, because quite honestly, it wasn't very clear from the beginning, and I'm not going to put that on the UG, that the information we continue to get from the state over, I mean, yeah, this all occurred within 50, 60 days from the time Parks said, "Here's as much money that the county can have," to, we have to have an answer, I think it was 56 days, without much guidance, you know?
I understand what you're saying, but I kind of will put it back on the UG in this sense. They were able to get their own police department and their own fire department the information to get their bids in. If they gave us that same courtesy, our police and fire could have had extra funding from the CARES Act. And when you're looking at, do you happen to know what their parks and rec department got?
I do not.
Or two county parks that they maintained, but then Kansas City, Kansas Parks. When I look at 449,000, and I have so many zeros, I mean, a learning lab, when we're shutting down businesses, expecting people to work from home, shutting down schools to 50% capacity, expecting our students to work from home, and a huge majority, a huge amount of our population has very little internet, very poor quality internet at best, that they're supposed to be running multiple Chromebooks or multiple iPads off of at the same time. So, they're shutting us down, but then we're getting 0% while their parks and rec are getting trail upgrades in new vehicles. I just, I mean, you know how I feel about it, but I think it's a good time to reiterate when we're looking at this funding, they're to look after us as well, they're to care for us as well as the county. And they can have easily said, "Hey, just so you know, our police and fire are putting in bids, it'd be a good opportunity at our school for your police and fire to put in extra bids." And Piper School District is putting in all of this for our Chromebooks and technology and computers to the home of our teachers and students. Hey, Bonner School District, it'd be a great idea for you guys to go ahead and bump this up so it could be more equitable across the board, where I feel like we're just shoved under the rug again and again.
Well, and I think it's interesting to point out that the police department did make some recommendations and the PD lobby was, that amount of money, the 40 grand, was just taken out. PD booking room, I mean, things that directly affect your personal contact related to someone that could potentially have COVID, that they, I mean, not that I'm taking away from the learning lab or, or, because those are as equal as important, but when you have a request from a police department to, that is putting their hands on folks and directly coming in contact and, and, and it's just taken out, right?
Right.
And then you see, and then you see what KCK's police department was able to put in for and receive, it's just, I mean-
And I will say this, so, so relative, so note the committee, yeah, which I was on, did not vote on each funding.
No.
They also, that was originally what they did. And, and so, if we go back to the, to the original amount, 224 dollars per person, for us, that would have equated to slightly over a million dollars. I don't remember exactly. And as you can see, we submitted what we felt were applications relatively close to that. And I do think that there's some, there's some administrative work that quite honestly, the county does have to do, is doing a lot of stuff and there's costs associated with that. So, I wasn't too worried about that. But there was discussion about why don't at least the two smaller communities get the 424? And then the rest of it goes to the UG and you decide on the, which would have been $3 million, I mean, roughly, we would have been a million, I think, Bonner Springs would have been a little under $2 million just by population, I'm trying to do it right.
But you were two votes.
Huh, yeah, and so-
There was no one else that saw it your way.
Yeah, and then so that would have left 34 million, roughly 34 million dollars for however the county wanted to allocate it for all other departments. And I would say, we didn't have any not-for-profit entities from our area that submitted. As you know, the school submitted what the school submitted, you know, much less than what Piper did and I think someone knows, so-
Which is why I don't understand why they couldn't say, okay, and I reached out to the commissioner and they said, "Well, it was a percentage." But when the, when the amount, when the total amount, you look at our pop, our enrollment, K through 12 enrollment, Piper's K through 12 enrollment, and they're very similar. And then, so when you're looking at one asking for hundreds of thousands more than the other and say, "We're just going to give both 80%," that doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense. You can say, "Let's fund this one and then we'll, we'll tear this one down a bit."
If we were both asking for the same amount and you decided that you were going to give 80% to each, that's, that's okay. But if one, one is asking for 10 million and one's asking for 1 million and you decide you're going to ask for 80%, well, that's-
You're using the term unified government, unified government, unified government. That tells our students in this portion of the unified government that you are worth much less than the students in the other portion of the unified government, which is hogwash. If you're going to do this on an equal basis, every student in this county under the uni, our unified government should have received the exact same amount. That is the only equitable way to do this. And for us to be shunned this much, and for it to be so weighted, I'm not getting used to it. I'm getting more irritated every single time it comes up. It's like, we don't have any representation at Seventh and Anne at these meetings. So what are we supposed to tell our citizens? What do we tell our students? When our friends in Piper, oh, well, you're not as important as the students in Piper. Sell that one.
Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, I mean, I realize we probably have to, is, we have to accept it to receive the money?
Yes.
There's, is there any discussion left? Is there any pushing back? Is there any? Is county interested in, in our needs, in our needs in the community for the CARES Act funding? Or have they made their decision and it really doesn't matter at this point?
I'm not sure I can answer that question, to be honest with you, I mean.
I just, you know, there's.
Accept the money or you don't accept the money.
I mean, I, I, I mean, the money has all been allocated, so, so the next, so the process was, so we worked with that committee. We tried to come up with some semblance of dollars. That was then put into a plan that got submitted to what's called the Spark Committee, which is the funding from the state. The state reviewed all the counties, the hundred and five counties submitted plans. They reviewed those plans and either said, we accept or reject your plan. The plan for Wyandotte County has been accepted with three exceptions, and I don't know what those are, but other than they were unified government department submissions that, that they have, that they pushed back on. So it doesn't impact ours.
Because a huge chunk of it is going to non-for-profit.
About nine million dollars is going.
Nine million, so we, we can get one million to run our city. And granted, a hundred dollars per person, per city, we've got a fire department to run, we've got a police department to run, we have court to run, we have a city hall to run, and those cost so much, and not so much per population, like those just cost so much to run. But when you're looking at the nonprofits getting how many million, approximately nine million, so we're getting a tenth of that. Um, I called partners, I don't, I, and Mike, I, I knew that you, I said, hey, would this be okay? To see if we could have them come into our own, Edwardsville, to have them do one of the drive-through grocery giveaways like they've done in KCK over and over and over again. And it's great for that community, that's fine, didn't even get a call back. So it, it would be nice if some of the nonprofits, if, I just feel like, I mean, I guess we have to, if there's no adjusting it at this point, we'll have to vote to accept it, I just.
I, I would say, I would say at this point, our, our, our option is to accept or reject this amount of money. Is there opening or opportunities for other discussions of, if, if any of the funds that are being allocated to the UG? And I can't tell you honestly, all their, I, I know there's stuff in the paper, but how they've sub-allocated, made decisions. And, and there could be revisions to that, you know? We took, the approach we took when we did it was, we said, what are our, what were the costs that we knew we had direct costs? I think this was the way that the bill, the legislation was created. What were your direct costs, right? Costs for PPEs, for people, where we had to bring in overtime people because you have a person that's out because of the illness, or you had to do extra stuff for the courts, to do remote, you know, our remote costs, any of those things, to ensure our people all got paid fully during that time. So we said, don't come in, we've got to separate people, and you can work four hours, and you can work four hours, we made them all whole, right? That, that was priority number one, and that was supposed to be the priority overall, was what are those direct costs that you should be reimbursed for? Right?
Right, which is why.
That's a hundred and sixty, almost a hundred and sixty with that.
Right.
Then we took the remaining part and said, okay, we want to focus on projects that help make sure that our citizens can connect with and interact with its elected officials and the staff members that provide service. And the other one was to ensure the safety of our people, right? The modifications from the police department, sterilization equipment from the fire department, which also gets used through all of our building, you know? That, that's why we focused on those items specifically. How do we get, and that's where internet comes in, that's where being able to have video conferencing comes in, right? And so that's how we focused, you know, others took a bit of a different approach.
Well, it's almost like there needed to be a spreadsheet that showed, a checklist, hey, this is what you should focus on. Not just, hey, go forth and conquer, and hopefully you come up with something that we're willing to check and say that you're blessed and you get that amount of money.
It probably would have been helped, I mean, and I was on that committee.
If they were asking for, we could have asked for the same thing.
Right.
I mean, when we're, when it's a nine million dollar for nonprofits, and we ask for less than a million dollars for a city, we ask for nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, and we're not, and we're, and we're cut that number, then cut in half.
And, and I understand what you're saying about the, the actual COVID costs, but then I don't understand zero percent for PD lobby modifications. I don't understand not improving our, our lobbying so that we can send that out. And, and I don't understand why there would be things like park and rec creation trails that are probably not just going to Wyandotte County parks, because I've asked about that, when our city can't even get nine hundred and twenty-six thousand.
But we're going to redo parks, trails.
But not Edwardsville. But not Edwardsville Park, I did ask them about that.
Now, I just want to be clear, so the, the reductions here were made in turn, right? So you can, you can.
Okay.
Because we only had four hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
Well, you had to cut somewhere.
I mean, so, so I, I, I mean, and, and, you know, in each of the departments, we talked about what, what's the most important aspect, right? So relative to the police department, you know, the booking room lobby had.
Our police department asked for a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, I, I just want to be clear that at the end of the day, I had to make the decision, right? To say, I only have four hundred and forty-nine, four hundred dollars, and I don't have nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. So where are we going to make adjustments and have the, the biggest impact? And collectively, that's what we did, but ultimately.
I don't think, Mike, just I'm complaining about that, or we're complaining about the ridiculous comparison.
And that you were put in a situation to say, how do I make our entire city a whole for being shut down by the county and, and mandates across our police, fire, court, school, or community? How do I make for, for you to be put in that position and say, how do I make us whole on four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars when there was, how, how many million?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven million, thirty-seven million. It, it just, it speaks for itself.
I, I just think there needs to be a change in thought at, at Seventh and Anne. Is we are all residents of Wyandotte County. No one is more important than the other. And if there's this type of a crisis, this is a, this supposedly was a phenomenal big crisis, and we had to act now. Every department was mandated to do certain things, and then we get this type of treatment when we have as high quality of citizens and employees as any other part of this county. And we, and we get this kind of allocation. It's, it's shameful. It's absolute, it's shameful that, that, that the whole thought process at Seventh and Anne is so weighted towards that end of the county. It's just shameful. That type of thought process is ridiculously shameful.
Well, and it's been, and it's been expressed, I mean, over and over and over and over, we've seen that. I mean, when it comes back, when it goes back to, just the most recent, was not even including us in deciding on where we were going to have COVID testing. We make the recommendation because we have our city where we know that, that makes the most sense to have that test site. And then we are not even brought, not even advised of that, oh, by the way, we find out that there was a test done down in industrial park that we weren't even brought up to speak on. I mean, the, there, that lack of communication with us is not there, or, I mean, it is there. There is no, we are, we're not working together, it's not a two-way street for sure. And, and it's, it does get frustrating. Now, I will say that on that nine or ten board panel, that my understanding, and I, and I may be wrong, but the, the, some of the commissioners that were put on that board, others that may have wanted to be on that board, they weren't asked. If they, the, the ones that were on there were delegated, you're going to be on this committee. So which, whoever did that delegating of people that's going to be on that committee, I think, personally, I believe, should have looked and said, we really should have a representative from the Bonner or Edwardsville. Either it be the at-large, or, or the assigned District Seven. I, I think that should have been the mind, but then it kind, that kind of goes back to what we are saying about kind of that stepchild to the side that doesn't really, you know, I mean, I guess stepchild is probably not a political correct thing to say anymore. But I mean, so what I mean is, eh, eh, it's just Bonner, it's just Edwardsville. So it's frustrating. I'm very, very frustrated with the outcome of these dollars. And I know that we only had two, two people, I mean, originally, we weren't even put on the board, if you remember, which I know we all do, we weren't even asked to be on the board, so.
Well, there were two people that were claimed to be Edwardsville, but they actually were Bonner Springs.
So.
Not on a different.
On, on, on a different, yes.
So that was, that was our resident.
So hopefully, there, we all know that there is room for improvement. We can only look up because I don't know that we could really reach, go much further down. I mean, and that, that, that communication gets fixed, and that we are, are taken more serious with our needs and what we need at our level. I think for us to ask for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for our police department, and then to find out that there's nine million dollars assigned to nonprofits, and we couldn't get the hundred and forty thousand for them, I think that's, that's terrible. That's not, that's not looking out for our city.
It's not looking out for county residents, if you think of, if they're looking at the county as a whole. It's not equitable treatment of all of the citizens of the county or the unified government. It's just, that's, if you want to look at it that way, that's the best way to look at it, is how unequitable it is on a per-person basis in the county.
What would be interesting too is to see, when you look at the breakdown of the nonprofits, all the businesses, all the money, and where those serve primarily, that, I think that would be really interesting to see, where the money is going for the organizations, for the, I mean, you know, some of, some of this town. But of the thirty-some million dollars, I have a hard time believing that much more than four hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred will benefit our, our people at Edwardsville.
Oh, so I'm guessing you need a resolution to.
Motion to approve resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash eleven. Resolution of the City of Edwardsville, related to the city's acceptance of coronavirus for a big funding. Second?
It has been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, with the clerk please call a roll.
Kaymar? Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Spikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
We intend to spend the money quickly.
Before they take a nap. We have to, yes.
We, we have been preparing.
I've got a check ready to be filed.
Mike, I, I would like to go back to Dave, so Dave doesn't have to sit here any longer.
I, I will, I will just say before I sit down, we do have an item coming up of where I think our fire chief has been working diligently with Kansas, Kansas Fire Department in a positive way. I will, I will leave it to him to discuss that part, Dave.
You're, you're next, after Dave, too. People bouncing back to item number seven.
Sorry, I just wanted to confirm something with the city manager. So we're bouncing back to the rezoning request for one oh six two five, one oh six three five quad drive. I did take a look in the zoning regulations themselves. And zoning regulations, there is no shop clock involved here. So, but what the zoning regulations do say is that when the fine commission in its report submits a recommendation of approval or disapproval of a proposed zoning amendment, the city council shall review the proposed amendment and adopt the recommendation, override the recommendation, or return it to the commission as provided in Kansas State Statutes twelve seven fifty-seven. So I went ahead into the state statutes, looked at the section, it appeared to be applicable. And this is the guidance we use for your three options on the motion, but there's an interesting thing here. Nowhere does it appear to address if you took no action, okay? There's not any indication of that. But the preface that does say is that the governing body may do some of these things. So it's not a you shall do the three options, which is approve, deny, or send back. It says may. Now, that's, I'm not a legal advisor, so I can't really tell you what that means, but I just wanted to make sure that was up in the open. I will tell you also, in this period of time, in looking at this, I've had a discussion with the applicant's rep who's sitting here with us, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, it was scheduled anyway, with the applicant in this. What I'm going to suggest that we do is table this item until two weeks from now, to their next meeting. That's going to allow us to meet with the owner's rep and the owner. We're going to describe the situation to them. There is a potential that they may choose to just withdraw the application completely and try to formulate a plan around the C two zone. I can't commit to that tonight, the owner's rep cannot commit to that tonight. But by tabling, it at least gives the option that if we have the meeting, we explain the scenario and where we're going, we may be able to have a situation where we get a development proposal that goes to C two. Now, what's nice about that is if they, if they voluntarily withdraw the application at this point, then everything we talked about, any shop clock, anything that's involved there, is off the table because there was never action taken on the item. So this gives them that opportunity to do that. And we may, we may find that they stay within the C two zoning, and their plan is different than what they're thinking about at C three, but.
I have a question about the, you said something about a K dot study, like K dot would have to do a study to find out what effect would be.
Well, what would happen is, and they indicated tonight, that they've done traffic analysis. That traffic analysis would be the study that K dot would evaluate them. Okay, so they've already done some work back behind.
When you say analysis, does that mean like G cell lanes that are not, that are not there?
Could be.
With not any room for them because the canopies for the station are almost beyond the line as it is.
That would all be K dot dependent on reviewing the analysis and what it's telling them and what they were going.
Basically ingress, egress, the safety of it, the speed limit that's on the highway as it is right now.
Correct.
The condition of the highway as it is now, when you enter and exit that station the way it is.
Correct.
The muddle, the puddles that stand there like they do down behind the A Street, the K dot doesn't do anything about. That's my two cents left on that.
Yeah, all of that K dot will review.
I would like to make sure that they're aware of that if we do decide to table this and go and have to meet it.
I don't see any issue with tabling.
I, I would recommend tabling, and it would surely be able. I would recommend tabling, and it would surely be a lot of unknowns. Is there a motion to?
I was getting ready to. I don't see any issue with tabling for two weeks, and if we gather more information between now and then, I think that that only helps us make our decision. I make a motion to table item number seven, which is to consider the recommendation for approval from the planning commission regarding an application to rezone property 10625 and 10635 Paul Drive.
Thank you. There has been a motion and a second to table item number seven. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Do you think Dave for doing that?
No problem. And what I will tell you is, if the applicant chooses to withdraw, it'll happen two weeks from now. The item may still appear there, but there'll be a basic report that says this item's been withdrawn by the applicant. So that way you'll at least get that report and nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next item on the agenda will consider authorizing inter-ends mutual aid agreement with the City of Kansas City, Kansas, for Fire and Emergency Medical Response Services. Chief Widdam here on board.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the council for free tonight is the recommendation that signed a mutual aid agreement between the City of Edwardsville Fire and the MSA agencies and that with Kansas City, Kansas Fire and the MSA agencies. Background, for many years, you've never signed mutual aid agreement between the two agencies, we can just call as needed. Through the course of the leadership change in the Kansas City Fire Department, to formalize more of a mutual aid agreement that identifies with what we can recall. Who was on our answer, who, we retain control of Kansas City, Kansas. Edwardsville, our employees retain our control and our oversight when we go into Kansas City, Kansas. There are still our employees that may be working for Kansas City, Kansas upon a couple of conditions, it's a question of mutual aid. It's all within the accordance, or it's all within these states that are signed by the KSA. It was reviewed prior to legal counsel before. There's no financial impact to it at all, it's just a formal document that says, if we are exceeding our resources and we have exceeded our capabilities and we can call on mutual aid for Kansas City, Kansas, if they have those resources available, they can respond to us and vice versa. It does not mean that we have to sit there and drop something that they call for us, we can not support it and the same with them. Either party can terminate within the night days by KSA with notification. It's just a question for myself, the city manager, to assign this agreement, pass along this other thing.
Who was the driving force behind this?
Between myself and Chief Callahan, both those, probably pretty equal to it. That, like I said, when I first got here, there wasn't no mutual aid agreement signed between the City of Edwardsville and Kansas City, Kansas. Many times we presented and just told, just call, we'll be there. That has not been a recommended practice for 15 years, since, for 15 years post-发生, since post-9/11 issues. So after the leadership change down town, it's reapproached. It's taken some time with some other issues to get worked out along the way, and then we were comfortable with it.
Do we have the same agreement in place with Bonner?
We have to go back and double check. We did have a mutual aid agreement with Bonner signed beforehand, yes.
Does Bonner have a mutual aid with KCK?
Right now that I'm aware of, no.
Are they working on that maybe?
Yes, there was proposal on their side. Their city manager had proposed a three-way agreement between all three communities of Windock County, myself and Mr. Webb, both of the, we should sit there and sign between the two parties ourselves so that we're not affected by a three-way agreement when one of the two of us may sit there and sit.
That just makes more sense to me. We're sending resources out to Bonner where we're limited, KCK, it just makes more sense. Ways out in our truck miles and.
I will say that, 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 you know, this has been an ongoing discussion for a long time. I will say that with some leadership changes at KCK Fire Department, Chief Callahan, I think it's been a more open, receptive discussion. I haven't personally been involved in those. I can say that in my previous discussions, and I believe Chief Widdam was with me in the very first meeting we ever had down there with the lead of all of the MIRG. I don't know that we, and I would say more than Fire, it wasn't a very receptive situation. As a matter of fact, it was even issues of where they wouldn't respond to medical assistance, we have a mass, a mass casualty.
I, I think their response was more hostile than anything. This might be.
But I, I, I think our working relationship, I mean, there's always little things that pop up, I mean, that's just, that's true.
And I don't know what's driving or what has driven that animosity, I guess. Type, I don't know why, I mean, to, to, to say that, I mean, there must have been some reasons, and I don't know what they are, and I don't pretend to know those reasons. But, I mean, I guess it kind of goes back to, all the way back to the one we were talking about, the CARES Act, though. That kind of resentment, like, you're not there to help you all, or, it's frustrating. Yeah, I, I, I really, when, when I really break down the true meaning of unified government, I mean, it, to me, it feels like, I mean, it means that we are together and we're, we're here to help each other figure out how to get through whatever may be presented to us. Not, well, we're, you guys are under our thumb and we're going to make those decisions and hope it's okay if it works out for you all.
And I think that, I think that was somewhat the position, right? If you call for help, I mean, number one, you'll have to call for help. I mean, I, I don't know how many times I've told that, you can't do this and you can't do that. And then number two, if you call for help, we'll decide what we're going to send to. You know, we, we have an accident on K32, I got a police department, I got a fire department, I got ambulance, but we need an extra ambulance, or we need another, you know, we need another pumper for traffic control. And what we got was a full battalion response, and then, and then was told, well, you use up all our resources. And we're going, quit sending, I mean, we're not asking you to send us two pumpers, an air truck, two ambulances, and four other people. I mean, I think our fire department is fully capable of assessing the scene and deciding what resource. This, and I'll say, I think Chief Callahan understands that, and I'm on the outside. But what this does is it specifically says that, you know, if they need something, you know, they need another air truck and we're, and we're available, and, and, you know, whatever it is, we're not going to send the whole fire department. Or they need another ambulance because it's an accident at I-70, or it's on, well, I-70, or it's on 435 north of I-70. We're, you know, area we can respond. I, I think they have done a great job of working that out. And I, I think a lot of that has, has, is going away, has gone away, or, like you said earlier, there's room for improvement. I think this, on the far side, is certainly a good first step for it. And more than likely, right, I mean, they have far more resources than we have. I don't think there's ever been a question about that, but, but there's times when we provide them service too, so.
When I read through the agreement, I, it's actually a joy to me. Because this is how intergovernment should work. This is how two, four portions of a county of a unified government should work together. Recognizing that every person they're serving is of equal value. Every life in every part of this county is just as valuable as any other life in any other part of the county. I, I, this is a beautiful document, I may correct your day, that we accept the Fire and Emergency Medical Response Services Mutual Agreement.
You make the motion, not a recommendation.
I would promote your motion.
Yeah.
Is there a, such a document within the police department?
They have a little different statutory.
Because I've never seen that at my time at the police department, that there was this angst or, yeah. I mean, I remember back, and I don't want to date myself, but back when 104th and K32, the gas station, was the spot to hang out in Edwardsville, where policemen and everybody, the sheriff's department and everybody. But I, but, and it just seemed like it was the more of the fire department and, but never within the police department. So, I mean, it always seemed like, I mean, we were willing and they were willing and everybody were willing to, on the police side, work together. Part, part of that was the leadership that was downtown within the specific fire departments.
Mr. Webb, we talked about the first meeting, the reelection, the first meeting, mine is two different things because there was no meeting. We were just given and told what we were going to get. When I called for mutual aid at the fire at Office Max, I got 13 pieces of apparatus because somebody kept dispatching this stuff out here. The last fire we had on June on 110th and, on 110th Street, we requested initially from KCK a pumper after the response with us, Bonner Springs. We got a pumper. We requested an additional pumper and additional ambulance, and we got exactly what we requested. We would have never got that prior to reworking the new leadership that we have. So it is a new day, it's just taking some time to get there.
That's good.
I do think that there, so in the law enforcement side, there are some different statutory protections as it goes. One of the other benefits of a mutual aid agreement has really, it's as much a, a legal thing about if a person's injured, a worker's comp, or lose liability. If, if your fire truck's responding to a call that's in an accident, so part of what this does too.
Cleans it up.
Basically says, right, if, if our people respond to a call with KCK and they're injured on the job, they're covered under our worker comp and vice versa. If there's an accident, it's, you know, it doesn't matter where the accident occurred, the liable party is the party that's operating the piece, which is the way it is and should be. But it provides, I, I could tell you, I've seen a situation where actually a firefighter was killed in the line of duty in another city without an agreement, and he was a volunteer in one city, worked in another, and the problem came about, they had no mutual aid agreement, so was he killed in the line of duty as it related to his first employer? And they said, no, because he wasn't working for the fire department, the crime, he's a volunteer in another department, for which they didn't cover insurance, and it ended up being a big mess. These kind of agreements also, from just an administrative standpoint, help protect our city and our people in those scenarios. So, I know you have a motion on the same.
If there are no other comments, I'm going to call for the clerk to, for roll call. There is a motion and a second.
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda will be consider selecting Gordon CPA to serve as the city's auditor for the year ending December the 31st, 2020. Sean, you're on board.
City of Newt Mayor, members of the council. Gordon CPA was selected as an audit from, for the 2019 fiscal audit. During the course of audit, there was no issues with management between Gordon CPA and the city management. And city staff recommends selecting Gordon CPA to serve as the city auditors for the year ending December 31st, 2020. The total cost for the upcoming 2020 audit is not expected to exceed $10,875. Total cost for the fiscal year 19, 2019 audit was $13,600. And the major difference there is because the city received over $1.1 million in federal funding, and therefore a single audit report was required because it went over the $750,000 threshold.
Motion to select Gordon CPA to serve as the city's auditor for the year ending December 31st, 2020.
Second. Does that amount of $10,875 need to be included in the motion?
It can be, I mean.
It's contractually stipulated.
That is the contractual mandate, yeah.
So not to exceed $10,875.
Second. Okay, there is a motion and a second to select Gordon CPA to serve as the city's auditor for the year ending December 31st, 2020. Would the court please call a roll?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Great presentation.
Thank you. He's got one more to give. Okay, he's got another one, okay. Next item to consider, resolution 2020-12 regarding the gap waiver for the 2020 audit.
You know what, we can, we can save you. I make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-12 regarding the gap waiver for the audit, 2020 audit.
Second.
They've moved in second to adopt the resolution 2020-12 regarding the gap waiver for the, on the audit. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Khar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites? Hey, not that we don't love your presentation, but yes.
I'm sorry, you got, you shouldn't have allowed for you to do it, but that's okay.
It wouldn't be great for you to get a lot.
Okay, Representative or Commissioner Burrows, would you like to make some comments? Do you want me to limit you to three minutes?
I may want to limit you to three minutes, there. But Mayor, City Council members, thank you for having me this evening. Basically, I came out, I caught the agenda, I wanted to, this is one of the few Monday nights I have available to come out and listen to the concerns of this, this city. I know I catch Bonner, and you both have these meetings on the same evenings, and it's very difficult for me to make each meeting, plus the meetings and sub-meetings I have at the Unified Government. Nonetheless, I still want to come by, and I do stay up on the website and see what's coming up. I'm going to step my toe into the care funding. I, I know there's a lot of concerns, and I hear the angst. First and foremost, you have every right in the world to feel the way you do. You're absolutely justified in that. I will share with you that initially, as Chair of the Finance Committee for the Unified Government, I was a little miffed as to why I wasn't appointed to serve in that chair's capacity. But whatever it is, the mayor made those appointments, and I just really kind of surprised you was no Southside Commissioner appointed whatsoever to that committee. And I made my, my point known. I also made sure that we had Bonner Springs and Edwardsville voices at the table, that we needed to have, have those voices there. I don't know to what extent the next round of funding will, will be. I know the finance, State Finance Council met yesterday. I believe there's an additional $75 million coming. Now, I, I will state, Mr. Webb gave a, a pretty good overview of that. There was $67 million in requests for only $32 million that came available to Windock County. And that money, the $100 per person that the Unified Government put out, that was fair and equitable across the board. That's one I did not have a problem with. But they started talking about the not-for-profits. It took me a little bit to understand, and I believe one of your council members had sent an email to the Unified Government requesting some clarification. So I am really trying to share with you that I have been involved in understanding of the situation. The, the $9 million to the not-for-profits, I don't think it was quite nine, I think it was about 6.7. It's, we're just rounding off this, rounding off dollar. But those not-for-profits, a lot of them provided services that could not be provided because we didn't have the resources. We as governments didn't have the resources to do it. So we wanted to ensure that they were made whole to keep those services rolling out. And when I say we, the committee that made those decisions chose to do so. The, the business aspect for small businesses, those monies, if I remember correctly, the committee chose to send those monies back to the local units of government so that the local units of government could determine which businesses in their communities they wanted to allocate those dollars to. So you know your business partners in your community better than other commissioners do, you're, you're the appointed body. So that was one of the other decisions. I will share with you that it, this is all very fluid, it happened to be quickly, and it needs to be, those dollars need to be spent. You cannot use these dollars to supplant budget items. All you can use them for is COVID-related issues and incidents. I think there may be a little, I don't want to call it wiggle room, but opportunity to be creative in how those dollars are used as we move forward. But my advice would be, it, it's, it's a good thing you accepted those dollars, not knowing when the second round and the third round is going to come. But it back to the question that was posed, will there be changes? I think now that we see some of the changes necessary to make this program more equitable, I think those voices should be loud and clear. But as your commissioner-at-large, I want you to know, I, I wanted to attend this evening, knowing this was on the agenda. I attended the one in Bonner and heard their concerns, they're very, very. They're very far out. If I could have been king for a day, I should commit to you that you'd have a strong voice on that, on that committee. So Mayor, I also, I just want to say, I'm also here, and I sit on the, I was appointed to the Kansas Economic Recovery Committee. I'll be at the peak of the rest of the week, and also meeting with the Secretary of Commerce for Development. And I do know development is very important to this community, knowing some of the challenges we all have in this particular pandemic. But I'm also here to share with you that you have a partner here, are very bullish on economic development. If there's any way that I can help, particularly when it comes to Starbond or and/or identifying partners in your community, please reach out to me, I'm here to do so. And you don't have to wait to reach out to me. I'll be keeping, if I talk with Mike and Mayor, I see yourself and other commissioners or other committee members at the, in the community. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening.
Thank you for coming, Commissioner slash State Rep. Burrows.
I have a quick question. On that funding's round two and three, and maybe you both, uh, will that, um, board, that committee be in place, or will there be a, a new board formed? Or do we know? I mean, at the end of, because you were on it, I mean, did they say that you will be on the next?
Well, as I understand it, and, and Commissioner, from the state side, so round two, that funding was a direct, you made direct application to the state for those funds. I will say that there was a, I'll call it a joint application that was done with the UG specifically for fiber access.
Right.
And effectively, it was to get fiber to public facilities in Bonner and to Edwardsville. So to connect down into our two communities. That's all been, the UG handled that, that their partner, UPN, I guess, the right third-party fiber provider. That was made, I think our chamber made some, I don't.
Chamber made some, and the city put some through that we've talked about the last meeting. And like Mike said, that's being completely administered by the state. And as far as I understand, there's no local body.
And that's why, I mean, I think I'm kind of going off in the direction of what they was. So if there is another round, let me put it this way, I'll make it, I'll redirect, how I'm going to ask this question. And if there's additional, um, boards, will you be on that, or have you been asked, or do you even know? And, so I won't have to go into a whole big long discussion, that if there is, Commissioner, I would like to, that we be known about that in advance so that we can request through, um, Administrator Bacher, whoever makes those decisions of who will be on those boards, that, um, we would like to, um, help name some representation.
I think that's a fair request, Mr. Stites. I, I would, I can't state if the committee will be the same committee. I didn't have that authority to begin with, that was produced, that committee was established by the mayor, and it happened quite rapidly, and we didn't have too much opportunity to change it. As I said, this care funding was pretty fluid, pretty quick. There was a lot of questions. I can't tell you how many hours I spent on Zoom with the federal level, as well as the governor's office, listening to questions come from local units of government, can I use this money for this? Can we use it for that? And there was comments that were made that we just need to get the money in the hands, get it, get it rolling, and then we will see how the federal government choose to back off. I will state, if any monies that are misappropriated, the city has to pay that back to the feds. And so that's why it needed to be approved by the state. And if those programs aren't approved by the state, then they won't get the funding. But I did hear your message this evening, you have, I believe you're accurate in your comments and your statements. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, and I, I don't know how it is that if you guys report back, uh, to, to Mayor Albee, you know, if you guys, when you guys have meetings or whatever, and if he asks, uh, so Commissioner Burrows, what's going on in Edwardsville? You know, that I would hope that, that what we have relayed tonight, um, gets relayed to him through you. Thank you.
Message received.
I appreciate you.
And thank you for your courtesy this evening, and your professional courtesy. And if you ever make your way to the peak of the office, it's always available, and it's yours. I'm not in it very much, I'm usually on the floor in committee, so you have a place to, you know, rest, use the phone, put your books, whatever you need, office is yours.
When Mayor Albee was here, my request was that Edwardsville have at least two representatives on any committee that affects our citizens.
How was that received, if you don't mind me asking?
Yeah, he had a.
With a non-committal.
Well, we only have one.
And so if, if our citizens are being affected, they need to be represented by the people they elected to represent them or a staff member that works on their behalf.
Mr. Adams, I do not disagree with you. As a member of this community, we're all, I'll borrow your words, we're all very equal, and we should be treated fair and equitable across, across the board throughout our community. As I stated, you have every right to feel the way you do, and you're not the only governing body that feels that way on the south side of the river, west of four thirty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You bet.
Appreciate it. I'd like to report, Mike, you're on board.
A couple items. One, just in response. The Paris Act Committee is still a group, a committee. And as we, as they do, like in September, there'll be, I think it's near the end of September, there's a report that has to be made, uh, that's required reporting. And so that group is still interacting. I was on the call this evening for the, uh, the committee report, so, you know, the UG has various, various committees. So I listened in on that, uh, as what was going on in the Paris Act. So staying engaged, I just, I don't know that there'll be any, any actions. Unless there are funds that are not allocated for some reason, then those have to go back to that committee for review. Just, uh, kind of follow up to some of the county stuff. As you know, uh, we, I kept kind of pestering through the health department about pop-up testing or testing in our community. Ultimately was connected through, uh, the, I think it was Vibrare Health to Heart to Heart International, who has agreed that they're going to do two testing dates here in the city, a Thursday, like four to seven, and then the Friday. We're also working kind of with the school and the mobile home park and others, and we will get that word out very broadly. And, uh, and they, you do not have to be symptomatic for that test. So unlike what's going on at the health department, anybody can come. And quite honestly, I think I would encourage people to attend. As I recall, the one test that was done, the testing signover at the business park, they had thirty attendees and zero positive tests. What we weren't able to determine was what was a resident immigrant, it's a Wyandotte, I went county at least. I, I, you know, I will say, Heart to Heart keeps pretty in-depth statistics that they're going to pass on to us because part of it is engaged through KU in a nationwide study related to COVID and COVID testing and setting. So I think that will be good, so help us get the word out. This past week, we had bond rating call. As you know, we have new bonds to be issuing, I think in our next meeting is the sales. I have not heard back from the bond rating agency. They asked most of the typical questions. They certainly had some input or concern about what was, you know, economic development, what was going on. Obviously, they were aware of what was happening at the hotel. So they had some questions about that, and if there's anything unusual. They asked about our financial policies, they did ask about, you know, maintaining our, our reserve funds and where we're at and what we're playing, which again, I fully anticipated that, so we sent them copies of some budget in terms of those questions. So a fairly straightforward bond rating call, so hopefully we will hear from them. You know, I think what we would hope for is to maintain our current bond rating. I can tell you, a number of communities have had downgrades mainly because of COVID and some of their cloud-based dependency on sales taxes. I think they were impressed that, you know, financially, uh, we were stable in making all our payments, we did all the things we were supposed to do, uh, that we, over time, have taken a pretty, uh, slow-grow approach and not, not depending on revenues that we've not seen yet. Matter of fact, we made several points about that, but we don't spend money we don't have, and I think that was good. The, uh, on the Riverview Crossroad project, we'll be issuing out proposals for clearing of the trees. I think we have, I believe we have everybody signed up, uh, but the, the tree clearing has to occur so the utilities can go in, so, because the utilities have to relocate, or they like to relocate before the project bids. Very similar to what we did on Kansas Avenue. Though Kansas Avenue, for those that were here, we had to clear at a certain time of year because of the brown bat or some bat. Then the next year, they said, no, the bat's not in eastern Kansas, it's in western Kansas. And now apparently the bat doesn't exist at all. So we don't have to worry about bats as we're clearing trees. And then the last item that I have is, I wanted to give you a little thought process. So myself and Dusty have been kind of thinking about after the council meeting and the discussions we had, kind of, uh, kind of a, a plan of action here. And so that way, we'll be coming back to you on a regular basis. But just to give you an idea, so in the next thirty days, some of this we're already working on, we'll be doing those kind of road repairs or cutting out sections, replacing sections, doing those things. Of course, we have one major street project. We're going to be updating the Pacer rating. We have a number of different sources of information, but want to get that back to you so you can see the overall rating of the entire city. And.
Has that Pacer rating come with a cost?
It did initially. We hired, uh, it was combined with VHC Roads and, uh, what's his name, I was ignoring.
Norm Bowes?
Norm Bowes, who used to be a county engineer and then, so there, I don't remember what the cost was. It wasn't, I'm going to say under ten thousand dollars.
It wasn't under ten thousand?
No, I said, I think it was under ten thousand dollars. And then you can update it as you go. The county also did a, uh, they did a mobile rate where they drive a truck down every street, and they have sensors, and then from the sensors, they make determinations. And so we, we have that data. It's getting that data into, you know, a form that, that works, that we can relate to. So, uh, and then when I say engage engineering, we, we had in our twenty nineteen bonds, we put money aside for ninety-eighth street kind of preliminary engineering, specifically for Kansas Avenue up to the city limits. But after our discussion, I think what we're going to do is modify that scope. And, and so we may do a little less intense work, but, but do the full corridor of ninety-eighth street and engage the engineers, so get the survey work out of the way, you know, work on some of the street section options, those kind of things that we can bring back to you also. You have a broader picture, and so we're not going to be doing design work, but more the broader picture. So what are the cost issues, what are the, you know, what are the things we need to do? So, you know, we probably have to break that up in the project and give you some of that there. So we hope within ninety days to come back with that study, with all the ninety-eighth street study. We also talk about adopt road section plans and policies. So as part of that, we're going to be looking at options, so different types of road options, and also use that to incorporate into a complete street plan. So I know y'all have heard that a lot, it's a policy we need to have in relation to funding. But again, our complete street plan may not be the same, you know, wouldn't be the same as a Leewood plan, right? So, so what do we want in our policy? It still has to meet certain requirements, but let's get our own in there. And of course, Public Works will be doing normal fall maintenance activities, and then some of that getting ready for winter activities, which we all know what that means, hopefully not much of it. And then what we'd like to do at around the six-month mark is take all that information and put together a true five-year CIP for our streets. So, you know, we've used the Pacer rating, we've done some general policies, but have it in a form where we can say, this year it's a million dollars, and next year it's this and this, and put that as part of our financial plan. And obviously, that'll be about the same time we'd be issuing twenty twenty-one road projects, whatever those may be. I'll just finish with saying that our applications to MARF, we had two applications, as you recall, one was for ninety-eighth street from Kansas to the north city limits. That one got highly aligned, which is the highest rating you can get for some committees. And then the other one was for sidewalk connections to the park. Originally, it got from basically here to, to the parks. And as you know, we get a lot of people that bump into that, Blaine Street will get trucks and all kinds of other things. They wanted to see more focus on sidewalks, so not trails, not, you know, not major, but. So we're looking at sidewalk and on-street bike lane, uh, fairly small project as it goes. Originally, it got raided, it got incomplete because there were some application questions. Because remember, they do these applications, and we put non-applicable because they weren't applicable, but apparently not applicable, meaning that you didn't answer the question. So we went back and we answered the question by saying, this doesn't apply to us, and that made it complete. So that's, I mean, actually have a grand application process as it goes, so there's nothing to do. So that's kind of the thing. Obviously, Dusty's kind of more behind the scenes on, on actually out there cutting up roads and putting pavement down and getting crews doing things. But he and I are kind of working on, on trying to, you know, put some meat around this concept. So I just wanted to give you that update, and that way, you know, you won't have to ask every committee, where are we at, where are we at, where are we at? We want to kind of say, this is where we'll be coming back to you in about thirty days. Where in the next thirty days, probably engage the engineer, maybe at the next meeting. By the end of ninety days, we hope we have these pieces done by the end of one hundred and eighty. Not to say we won't have any in between, but just so you have an idea of what we're doing over the next six months.
Hey, how do we coordinate with the Unified Government on, so we're talking about ninety-eighth street, that being highly aligned? Well, they, that only means to I-70, because that's what's in our city, ninety-eighth street from Kansas Avenue up to I-70.
Right.
So, I mean, taking ahead here, and, and so here we have this nice road from Kansas Avenue north all the way to I-70, and then it's, reverts back to what ninety-eighth street is currently.
Right.
So, I mean, is there thoughts that we, um, work with the Unified Government to let them know where we're at in this? Or do they know where we're at in this process? And that maybe our timelines, they align up, that, you know, I mean, it would seem like we would want ninety-eighth street to be completed from State Avenue all the way down.
Well, in the, in the regional plan, the twenty, KC twenty-fifty, is that what it's called roughly? So in that, when we did that, we, actually, the project from twenty-fifty is K-32 to State Avenue, actually, is the, is the full project. This is a piece there.
Right.
We've been having, and especially Dusty's been having, uh, more contacts and engagements with the Public Works side of the house over, over there. Jeff Fisher and I have talked about even this particular item, you know, not on a regular basis, but we have discussed it in the past. So yes, we'll, we'll keep them engaged, uh, because there's also, you know, a sewer line up there that I know they're just, you know, working through.
Well, I know that ninety-eighth.
And even south, on the south end with BBE Water, I mean, they want to upgrade that water line, but they've somewhat held off because we were talking about doing something with that road.
Well, and there's a question about realigning ninety-eighth street behind the truck facility that's there, and realigning that up with the new ninety-eighth street, which isn't so new now anymore, but the, the ninety-eighth street is there. So maybe that, those, those talks can happen.
Yeah, and I'm, and I know the UG also has applications, Jeff and I both serve on the STE committee. So we will be seeing each other quite a bit. The, the process of selecting projects is now kind of in, in, in the time. So everything's filed, everything's in. The staff at MARF starts reviewing all those applications, then we give scores. Then we kind of go in and fight for everybody's, you know, there's, you know, there's twelve million dollars per year, and there's forty million dollars worth of projects a year. That's kind of how, you know, it's about three to one, probably six to forty for each year, uh, for roughly twelve, twelve and a half million dollars. Unless the feds finally decide to actually fund, uh, fund a actual infrastructure plan for more than a year at a time. But it won't be happening in the next twelve months, that I know. We're all be really surprised. That's all I have tonight, Mayor, must have had other questions.
Jack, you have anything?
I do just have three quick dates I do want to put on your radar. October first, the chamber is going to be hosting Kansas Secretary of Commerce David Tolan in a kind of a webinar that the chamber folks will facilitate from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. And so if you're interested, just let me know, we're trying to shoot out information to get plugged into that for our local businesses and the businesses over at Bonner. LKM, if you've not seen information come out yet, they're still moving forward with their annual conference. It's going to be taking place completely virtually. So, if you've not seen information from that, I'll, I'll be sending out information that LKM sent out so you get a set to the agenda. We will then be selecting our voting delegates for the business meeting portion of that. That's October thirteenth through the sixteenth. And then the next month, what we've decided on, the concept for our citywide cleanup, and we shared this with the CPPS board last week. Obviously, we couldn't hold it under the concept that we usually run with in the spring. We kind of were holding out, but maybe we can hold some kind of event in October. That's not panning out, so we're after them having the event where we have forty R containers stationed down at City Hall. We scheduled a bulky item pickup day, and Waste Management will have teams of trucks on Saturday, November fourteenth, essentially sweeping the entire neighborhood. And what we're doing, we're going to get the word out in our next utility billing that residents are encouraged to put out two to three bulky household items for pickup. And we're kind of nailing down on, on some of the particulars of that. But no construction items, nothing with Freon, no hazardous materials, kind of no tires, you know, some of the boilerplate stuff. But November fourteenth is the date circled on your calendar for bulky item pickup, and that's all I've got.
Zach, I had a question about that. I saw it in the hot shot, and I had a few people comment to me, because they were, a lot of folks never really use that, not to just throw away bulky stuff, but they, in other areas, they put out their shit, it's more than just a couch or, or what have you. On the hot shot, it said due to county restrictions, we didn't have, which county restrictions?
Well, it's largely the, the overarching public health issue as far as gathering goes. I believe the forty-five person limit is, there's, there's still some limit to the mass gathering of it. And if I were to ask a public health official over at the county, I would say that, I'm pretty confident in the fact that they would tell us that gathering that many people and sifting through essentially garbage is not going to be a allowable event in the city and within one of that family, probably with it, or a advisable event.
So, when I've been there the last few years, people pull their vehicle up and if they couldn't just, so you're saying someone couldn't drive their own vehicle and do their own stuff into a container and drive out?
I mean, we, we, we talk about that as a concept. There would still need to be some level of supervision, and that's all of the, the participation that the city staff does and the elected officials do is all voluntary. And what we want to do is discourage much, a bit, the volunteers have a pretty big role. Even, I mean, it's, it's not often that somebody comes and is completely self-sufficient and getting rid of their items into the, into the container. And also, there's a level of, we don't, we need to have some level of, of monitoring and supervision of that, what is going on, and logistically, it's becoming more and more difficult. On top of that, Waste Management, they had some, the residents I spoke to over there also have some additional safety concerns for their folks and the delivery of it and all that, that, that they have been more comfortable. This is the model that they recommended us going forward with.
So, they didn't feel like it was safe to drive their trucks and drop off the container?
That's, that, apparently not.
I will say, we are out for bid on our garbage collection.
Okay, that's good. I just, I mean, that doesn't, I, I appreciate that you're just the messenger, I, I understand that. I was just wondering, because I, usually that's a pretty social distance type of event. There's not forty-five people gathered together ever in a tight space there.
The primary concern was the dis, I mean, the, wasn't having masks on, scheduling it being, with the weather starting to turn. So, either people would have masks on all the time or they wouldn't. And that level of kind of close interaction, I think, was an area of concern, between, say, the volunteers and the people coming here. If we were to keep it under the same concept that we had in the past.
I mean, I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, being there in the past, I don't think I was ever within six feet of another person unloading their, their stuff. I pulled stuff out of people's trucks and was fine doing it again this year to serve our community. I, I feel like personally, I, I would have liked to have been, previewed the decision before it was made. I personally would have been happy to show up and help out, I still would. I think that's a once-a-year thing that our community really benefits from. And I appreciate that we're at least doing the free bulky items, but I'd like to see if it's possible, or actually what additional cost that is to our cities and start driving around and picking it up. But then if there's anything we can offer for smaller items to be collected.
We're going to be trying to backfill some of those other supplemental areas, like the, the, the citywide garage sale portion of it. We're going to try and find a date in October to, to have that. Try and find an outlet for some of the donated items, have sometimes, maybe we could host a drive at the community center through Adelante, we reached out to them. The e-waste is a big area, because that has been used a lot, we collect about, on average, four or six tons the last couple of years, we've introduced that. Waste Management can take e-waste, it's not, you know, it's not encouraged. And there's some items that some of the older computer monitors, they just can't take because of the hazardous material. But we're trying to backfill those other kind of items outside of this, dumping the big stuff in between now and that, that November fourteenth day.
Okay, um, please, you know, just keep us posted on that.
Thank you, Dave. Chief Widdum.
Just a note, we, we submitted, and we do every year, our Justice Assistance Grant, we don't submit directly to the federal government, we go through the state allocation. In some places such as larger, such as Casey Day, we have a direct application to the, to the federal government. So, we're just a little different with our side. And we submitted over sixty thousand dollars in requests for equipment. And we were at the award decision meeting in State Capitol, and we were awarded our full funding amount to include. We're replacing our mobile data terminals and our police cars, they're now going, by December seventh, you're going, just getting dated. And we, we're acquiring a license plate reader, automated license plate reader. And so those are the two things that we encompassed in that, in that grant funding. And partly, there's some restrictions on kind of the boundaries of what we can ask. Or those were certainly well within the parameters of the law. So, we were, we were aligned with the funding, the statewide funding goals or objectives. So, that's, a note, that's it. Uh, there's some tires on Ninety-fourth, if you haven't seen them, they were dumped, we discovered them a couple of days ago. And Zach Daniel sent us a message that maybe, maybe they've gotten them. We have been in contact with this owner before, and they live in Texas, in a very rural area. Has a full voicemail, so we, we've been trying to hunt them down to see whether or not that's something they authorize, because we don't know, but it's on their property, so we're seeing that. Uh, we, we have, we presume they're probably not supposed to be there, but it's on private property. So, then we're going to work out maybe what cleanup effort if we need to, but we need to talk to the property owner first and we just have their background and that, so.
Thank you, Chief. Short story, Chief, Whittemore.
Uh, just two things. One, I'll be leaving on vacation on Wednesday, while I'll be back next week. So, again, we'll be in charge of the department while I'm gone. Two, as part of the CARES funding at the federal level, it did not rotate down to states. There was a second funding opportunity through FEMA, through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant for PPE related specifically to COVID-19. That window will open up in October, and it is only for combination of volunteer departments. So, us being a, a combination department, we are pursuing, excuse me, some COVID-19 PPE funding back to that. However, it's a small amount of money going to AFG, it is a little bit of a problem. That is still supposed to open sometime in October, we don't have the definition yet.
Chief, was there anything else from the, on the county emergency management side? Did they do any kind of stuff for-
They're still working on Stafford Act declaration. However, that still is not coming, you know, to the Senate or the House at the federal level on how they're going to address the Stafford Act disaster, uh, declaration proclamation over funding. And that's been the problem, it's usually, particularly if you have that disaster funding that comes through that side. Pandemic, they ran through the CARE Act, the HEROES Act, and everything else, that was still beginning to fade at this time.
So, we made application through that process too, so.
Thank you, Chief. Dusty?
We've covered it all.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Whittemore, thank you very much for working with, with Casey Day on the mutual aid agreement. That, that is exactly the type of thing that would be great if we had in all departments and all parts of the county, all departments in the county. So, I really appreciate your work on that. I know that's been a long process, I appreciate that. I would like to echo Councilor K. R.'s feelings about taking trash day. I don't see them complicating forty-five people within any distance at all. And so, I, I, without getting too opinionated, I think we have hyperreacted to everything. I know at the bottom of everything is an attorney. And so if we're doing that for, to keep the liability off our back, okay, whatever. But, but it is a vital part of our community, and it's been around for longer than I've been around. And so, I'm disappointed that we, we didn't, we are not looking to ever, if there's an opportunity to do that, I think we should try to consider that. Do I have to?
Thank you. Carolyn?
Thank you to both of our chiefs for applying for grants, that is fantastic, saves us tax dollars. And we need to make that rapid go as far as we can, and so, it is very representation for departments. Mike, I wanted to ask you, we talked before about as we're getting to know more about COVID-19 and about how that's affecting our community. CDC came out over a week ago, said over ninety-four percent of reported deaths were folks with comorbidities. Ninety-four percent, a huge amount. And so I feel like hopefully, our health officials are taking into consideration how that would affect folks that are otherwise healthy. And I was wondering, I know we talked a while back, a few times, about finding out what is our benchmark, what is our goal? What are the exact numbers? What are we working for to step down and step down and open more things up? And not continue on all the requirements and limitations, to continue to find out or ask if there are-
Well, actually, the mayor raised that, um, call after our last council meeting, and we didn't really get much of a clearance of moving, bringing it up again. I mean, it was, well, we're still, you know, we're still peaking at, you know, sixteen percent or whatever, whatever. And I, I think one of the challenges is, and I would say, the health department agrees, is that, that, you know, the base is not the same. So, you know, we look at U.S. and it's five point five, maybe it's eleven percent or six percent testing rate. But they're testing from, where really in Blaine County, except the KU hospital, all tests are still symptomatic.
Right.
So, the number comes down because KU hospital is testing. So, anybody that comes to the hospital for a procedure or for an in-hospital stay has to be tested, right? That part of that. And so, I, we don't have really a breakdown, so how is KU hospital entering to, to the county at the, you know? We know what the county, the county is generally two or three percentage points higher than the overall testing rate. But again, they're testing only, I think that will be one of the benefits, quite honestly, of having testing here that is for anybody that wants to drive up. And we will be encouraging people to participate, because I think it's important for us as a community to know that, even as an organization to know that, right? Is, is, I mean, we have people who are asymptomatic and positive, we're certainly going to know that, not, not because of, you know, health internally. But, you know, I think there was even some discussions around what about doing, you know, animal testing, you know? So, I just worked out animal testing and I was negative, even though I know I was in close proximity to a person who was positive. So.
Well, and I think it's important with something that is a virus.
Right.
And I'm, I'm not a doctor, but people are going to get it, and the more time goes on, the more numbers are going to go up. And especially if most of our testing is for symptomatic individuals. But when we're looking at the hospitals, so the people that are affected most negatively are getting hospitalized or, or dying from it, and those rates are, are a little easier to track than when you only test symptomatic. And so, I'm, I'm not going to say this is, when they should do what, but I, I think it would be easier for everyone if we had a benchmark, this is the number we're aiming for. What, it doesn't matter what, what our test are now, but this is the number we're aiming for, and when we hit this level, then we can look at moving down instead of just a gray area with, with your local.
We will ask that sort of question to them, not what, you know, what is the benchmark to the next step, man? I, I do think that question has been broadly asked about a specific game.
And I appreciate that you guys are bringing it up and, and that it continues to. Just three days ago was September eleventh. And I think that it would be, I think it's a good opportunity for us to appreciate our first responders. And I don't know if, if this is something we would do at a government level, like we have proclamations that we read once in a while, so we involve Patriot Day in that. But I think it's a great time to remember the sacrifices that our police, fire, and EMT are making on a day-to-day basis. And I wanted to be sure to do that this evening, so thank you guys, I really appreciate it.
You're up. Mr. Whittemore.
Well, I love to say now, and says three words to that. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here and looking forward to your representing us forcefully at the county level, because we all feel the same. I try not to say too much, because I have a, have a camera back backfired on me when I complained about them. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chief Whittemore, for the mutual aid agreement. I think with Casey Day, that's really been a long time coming, and I hope that it works out. Because I've seen it where it didn't work out so well, and I think that's really a good thing. Checks and balances, I wanted to make sure, you know, that it was mentioned that make sure you spend the money on what it's allocated for. Don't veer off of that, and I just wanted to make sure that we were very careful about that. We really can't afford to give any money back. And the other thing would be on, we're talking about Pacer ratings and all that on streets. I had some phone calls on all that rain last week about Newton Avenue flooding pretty bad. And I'd like to have some evaluations done on that too, or anything we could do to reduce some of that on Newton Street. Although there's a lot of drainage, whistle, like all of them, going to dry later, so aren't there or plugged up entirely. But I think maybe just handle it at a time down in the old town area on that too. So, with that, I'm, I'll be over there.
Murray?
Thank you, Chief Whittemore, Chief of Facebook, you, all your hard work. I, um, would ask, I don't, I'm not quite sure when I asked about if we have a mutual aid agreement with Bonner. Do we have one? If, if, if not, can we get one?
Yes, ma'am.
Because of my example-
Well, we, we were talking about that, we, we're just-
Your example is scary.
We're making sort of very, because we did it, we've done some things in writing, we just want to make sure that what we-
It covers everything.
We want to have a, a light agreement.
Your example is frightening, so.
We, we know we have-
And if we're going out there as often, or often, if we ever go out there, we need to have that.
Yes, we want to have written formalized to write that stuff, that's not-
We have a couple that we have done as part of not only the federal grant, that we successfully got for two years ago. We've also had another one that was done in my time. If it's not part of this one, we'll be back in front of this council to request one for Bonner Springs. But on that point, our working relationship with Bonner in the six years I've-
But on that point, our working relationship with Bonner, in the six years I've been here, has been excellent. Part of that has been because it was driven because of the lack of aid from other personnel. I know that through our conversations, all three chiefs have been sat down before, so we've got a whole new, different aspect of how we're looking at things, especially in the southwestern portion of Windock County, not only the two small communities, the Bonner and Edwardville, but even on the western side of Windock, there's not a large significant force for KCK fires, so there are just only so many resources around here. So we are looking at that for sure, that it's not the same capital back in front of this council request.
Thank you. One other thing regarding police and fire, I know it's been a couple meetings ago, there was an instant brought up about the dispatch. Is there confusion, or was there, about the child that was missing and the dispatch call?
I think all that's been resolved.
Has that been resolved? I mean, it was, it was a little alarming to think that if that dispatch call didn't come in, I don't know which one of the chiefs.
Specifically, I had a conversation with KCK Fire Dispatch Supervisor and Fire Chief last Tuesday. Part of that was driven because of the incident with the child in the river. What has transpired out of that? KCK Fire Dispatches by actual, this is the reported incident location, and that is how they dispatch. PD is dispatched from PD's side, and there's a slight deviation in how PD is associating and assigning the resources to it. Part of mutual aid agreement, part of just the change, the more open avenue to communications with that. So anything that's close to on the border, they're going to sit there and try to do a little more due diligence to ensure that, you know, if we could be there a little bit quicker, that we're notified just as soon as PD is as well. But what we have is two different dispatch systems going on, and they're both reconnected by their own separate entities down there, and that's where the problem gets into the lack of or the miscommunication of who's sitting who's watching. And that's why we have 435, where you may have an Edwardville police officer against dispatch, but the town police department has got the information, it's 435 and Kansas Avenue, is where when it comes in on the fire side, they got the calls, 435 and Holliday, and that's assignment to KCK fires. So that's why there's that difference. And like I said, part of our meeting that we had was to start clearing a lot of that up.
So it's still in work in progress?
It is a very, it's a very dynamic work in progress, but we've got some mobile line communication with it.
Commissioner Burrows, thank you, thank you so much. Like everybody said, hopefully you take our, our thoughts, our suggestions, our concerns back to the Commissioner, that our voice be heard down there.
Yes, ma'am.
All have, thank you.
Commissioner Burrows, one of the things that we had recommended, and that we had talked about, and it happened, I guess, prior to me being elected here, was that there was a supposedly some sort of a meeting that was had by Edwardsville elected, KCK, UG elected, Ed Bonner elected, sat in a, in a, in a room and had a, and had a meeting. And I think that that is, and I don't know, we've, I don't know where that actually went until we brought that up, and I, it's kind of, I've never heard another word about it. I think that when you, when you bring those people in a room, in a gathering, you eat, you break bread, and you talk and discuss and cuss and get things done, I think that's how you really forge relationships, that, you know, people say, man, you know what, I like those guys, but we like you guys, you know, we're able to exchange phone numbers and talk, and I would really like to see, and I'm just educating you on what we have asked, I would like, and I'm asking tonight, that we do what we have to do to have, get that meeting on the, on the books. And I know that that's not an, probably an easy task with everybody's schedules, but I mean, you have to start somewhere, and if we don't start by asking, it will never happen.
I'll, I'll start by contacting my two fellow city managers at least tomorrow, and start kicking the, kicking that ball, and we'll, we'll see how that, that grows.
Okay.
The mayors during their, they have their mayor's meetings, where they have to be discussed there too, for, obviously, the commissioners here and.
Yeah, a, anybody that's, has the ear of other electeds, you know, that's easy to, to present that to them. Where are we at on the trash pickup for the community service, the courts issuing community service for people to be picking up trash?
I, I don't know if they've sent in story, if they, if anybody has participated, might have to follow up with the judge.
So can we get an update on what the process is, what is supposed to happen? Because we have a really.
Well, so, so the process is if somebody comes before the court and they either, for whatever reason, can't, can't pay their fine, so not the court fee, but the fine part, then they have this opt-out, they have to sign documents, right? So they can participate in the program to, whether pick up trash or do other chores along those lines. So they, they sign in for that, they then contact the city to schedule their time, and then they do their work, and then they get credit for that time, they get $10 an hour credit for their time back against their crimes. I just don't know if the court has, they have all the information, they have all the stuff, I just have to follow, I have to look for the judge and prosecutor to see who had, I don't know anybody that had failed with it, but they've only had one court date since we put that in, so I, I just have to follow, I just don't think it's real.
All right. So north of I-70, which I know that this is going to be in KCK now, on 98th Street, if you guys have driven there, three weeks ago, I called the UG to tell them about 20 bags of trash that was dumped under I-70. I was told that they'd be out there the next day, that's been three weeks. Now there's a couch and from, I'm talking from State Avenue down to I-70. Now there's a couch and no less than 10 tires that have been dumped, along with the 20 bags of black trash bags that are under the bridge. So I know that that's our border and such, and that's why I called KCK Public Works to let them know, and I'm, and Commissioner, I'm not getting anywhere, it's been three weeks, and so you might be able to help out on that.
I did see a cow, where I, I mean, I drove up that way, didn't I, that up?
Well, I'm north with a shoe.
No, I saw a cow.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's a little, a little further north.
Right.
And they, there was also a, just, just at that cell tower site, there was a Polaris ATV that was recovered, stolen, that was dumped right there also. So coming a little dump spot up there.
Follow up?
There's one. So Commissioner, I appreciate being here, and hopefully that we can, we can move forward, and communication will help, and get some things resolved and move forward. Thank you much, that's all.
Thank you. I will make a comment about the COVID reporting. Now on our calls, we get a, we get a detailed report from KU of which is Windock County, which is, and that was from my request, so we get, we get some information. I'm not sure that we get anything like that from Providence, because there's a possibility that somebody from Leavenworth County is there, but at KU, the reports are always including how many are from Windock County, so.
And it's probably, if I average them, about a third of the total cases.
Yeah, yeah.
It varies, but I would say about a third are generally Windock County related.
Other than that, thank you all for all your comments. Commissioner Burrows, thank you once again, and with that, we are adjourned.